Gather round, the fire, the fire. The fire, the fire.
Good after a good evening, Vacaville. I will now call the regular planning commission meeting of Tuesday, August 15th, 2023 to order, and I will ask clerk to please call the roll.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Chair Klein.
President.
Vice Chair Rudin. Commissioner Wilkerson. Commissioner Fortney.
Here.
Commissioner Vargas.
Here.
Commissioner Lightfoot. Commissioner Banta. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Nancy. Everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance, and I will ask Commissioner Lightfoot to please lead us in salute.
United States of America, the public from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner Lightfoot. We will now move on with regular business, starting off with staff communications. At this time, I will ask if there are any communications or announcements for this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Chair Klein. We do not have any changes to the agenda, and we did receive communications on both items 7A and 7B, and staff will identify those when we get to those items. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Morris. We'll move on to approval of this evening's agenda. This includes the continuance of the Dutch Bros' public hearing item as shown on the agenda under item 7C. If there are no changes, do I have a motion and then a second to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Moved by Wilkerson, is there a second?
Moved by Fortney.
Oh, Fortney?
Yeah.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Lightfoot. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wilkerson.
Excuse me. Please call the item.
Commissioner Wilkerson. Commissioner Fortney. Commissioner Vargas.
Yes.
Commissioner Lightfoot.
Yes.
Commissioner Banta. Vice Chair Rudin. Chair Klein.
Yes.
Pass.
Our next item is business from the floor. The portion, this portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the planning commission on any issue that is not on the agenda. There will be a limit of three minutes per speaker. I welcome anyone who wishes to address the commission regarding a topic or issue that is not on the agenda this evening to please approach the podium.
Alicia Minion, and I live in South Town. I live in the TriPoint Home Development, it's 141 homes. As you might remember, that project was subject to the South Town Development Agreement that was executed in 2004. On June 15th, 2021, some of you were on the planning commission where staff had asked the planning commission to recommend the approval, the extension of that South Town agreement. If that extension did not occur, the staff highlighted certain revenue items like the community benefit contribution fee, the Melrose, water sewer, da-da-da-da, would be eliminated. Yes.
Okay, I used to have a little light here, but it's... Yeah, if you don't mind, I just don't want to shortcut you or give you more time.
Okay, I have my iWatch, I can set the alarm myself.
I'm starting in 10 minutes.
Right.
We want to be transparent. Okay.
Timer, right here.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Warren. Okay, ready to begin?
Okay, great. So, June 15th, 2021, you're asked to recommend city council to extend the South Town Development Agreement for a period of three years, otherwise the consequences is a loss of revenue. And then what had happened was that the staff never brought it to city council, and this is inconsistent with the requirements under the municipal code and also state law. You should know that development agreements are so important, they're an ordinance, and there are state laws that govern development agreements. Cities have their own municipal code regarding development agreements. The city's code cannot be less stringent, less restrictive than state law. So, council never got to deliberate on the South Town Development Agreement, and you were never told that council never got to vote on city council. Me, as a public member, I never received adequate notice that told me that the development agreement had died, and the consequence was enormous. It's not just that we lost local control over the South Town apartment site, but what I wanted to do is I quantify the loss to the city. The South Town Development Agreement required a community benefit contribution fee for the apartments and for homes, and it escalated every year. And based on the year that when the apartments and these homes are going to be built, because as you remember, KB Homes has like 242 homes to build, and the apartments are 236 units. We lost $4 million on community benefit contribution fees. We also lost our Melrose tax, which is CFD number 11. That will not be assessed on the apartments, they're just paying 1.4 million flat. Now, I have a degree in finance, I've worked in finance and the securities industry for over 30 years. I know how to calculate present value versus future value. The present value of the cash flow stream for the Melrose tax, when you, and it's in perpetuity, that loss on the apartments alone, and that is 13 and a half million. Okay? Now, KB Homes have already said they're not interested, the Park Parish Project, they're not interested in levying a CFD number 11. If they're successful, you will lose another 20 million. Those two items alone, the city is out potentially 38 million, definitely 17 million. It bothers me that there's been no meeting to discuss, how do we prevent this from happening? There's no internal controls on development agreements under state law and your own municipal code. Development agreements must be reviewed annually for compliance. I see no evidence that that's ever happened, ever. Okay? And the reason why I'm upset is not only do I have to deal with a horrific project, we have a loss of tremendous money that was for residents.
Thank you, Ms. Minion.
Help, please help, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commissioner Chair, committee members, and staff. My name is Leo Escarsiga, I'm a seven-year resident of the city of Vacaville. In the near future, this body will have before it a project that will have profound impact on the families in the North Village neighborhood and surrounding communities. The project is a battery energy storage facility at 7050 Leisure Town Road. Having said that, I would like to quote the city's mission statement. "Our mission is to understand and balance our citizens' needs, desires, and resources to achieve the highest possible quality of life for the overall community through the services we provide for the, that we provide." Those four words, the quality of life, can sum up why I refer to Vacaville as my home. I would venture to say the vast majority of the families purchase homes in the North Village community for the quality of life. So, Planning Commission, what effect would locating a power grid-scale battery storage facility adjacent to the North Village neighborhood have? To explain, I'll reference a report from a Concord, California firm, Weston Solutions Incorporated, that was tasked by the Environmental Protection Agency to assist with air monitoring and documenting the emergency response activities related to a lithium-ion battery fire at the PG&E Storage Facility in Moss Landing, Monterey County, California, on September the 22nd, 2022. The fire was reported in the early morning at 2:00 a.m. A battery caught fire at the PG&E Battery Storage Facility. Due to the potential inhalation of toxic smoke, the Fire Department and Sheriff Department issued a shelter-in-place order for the properties in Moss Landing and surrounding areas. All the order was issued, or at what time the order was given, is not mentioned in the report. One can imagine that the emergency alert may have been sent out via cellphone or landlines to the sleeping residents. Perhaps the Sheriff Department drove into the neighborhood and made loudspeaker announcements directing the residents to close your windows and turn off your ventilation equipment. At 7:00 a.m., a section of Highway 1 was closed. Incidents such as this have occurred across the United States, in Europe, and in Asia. To conclude, no community benefit attached to this project is worth the potential threat that would loom over the residents of North Village and the surrounding neighborhoods. I'll provide a copy of this report for the record and my contact information. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Are there, I would invite any other speakers who would like to comment on an item not on the agenda to line up at the podium? Okay, with that, I will close business from the floor, and we will move on to item six, the consent calendar. We have one item on the consent, which are the minutes of the July 18, 2023, meeting. Does anyone from the commission or the public wish to pull the consent item for discussion? Do I have a motion? Moved by Commissioner Fortney, is there a second?
Also.
Seconded by Commissioner Vargas. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wilkerson. Fortney. Commissioner Vargas.
Yes.
Lightfoot. Commissioner Banta. Vice Chair Rudin.
Yeah.
Chair Klein.
Yes.
Pass.
Thank you, Clerk Tolson. We'll now move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. The first item for public hearing is the Montessa House Plans. But first, I want to add an admonition about ex parte communication. After commissioners disclose any ex parte communication, we will receive a presentation from staff, followed by commissioners' questions, and then we will open it up up a comment. Commissioners, does anyone have any ex parte communication to share? This is the time to disclose whether you met with anyone about the project and whether you received any new information that was not included in the staff report or attachments that would affect your review of the project. Okay, very good. We will now move on to the staff report.
Good evening, Chair, members of the planning commission, and members of the public. The presentation before you tonight is regarding the Montessa House Plans proposal. The request before you specifically is to construct a build-for-rent community consisting of market-rate rental units in the Montessa subdivision located at 1222 California Drive. The map on the right of your screen shows the location of the project, which is bounded by California Drive to the north, Keating Park to the east, the existing Skyview Neighborhood to the west, and the El Matador Manufactured Home Park to the north. There are also some other major roads such as Almo Lane and Almo Drive, which can be seen at the top right corner of the map. For some context, the Montessa project was originally approved in 2007, but the, due to economic factors at the time, the development agreement for the Montessa project expired. A new approval was issued and a new development agreement executed in 2016. A new approval was issued and a new development agreement executed in 2016. Between 2017 and 2021, various administrative development agreement amendments were approved by the community development director, which led the way for new house plans to be approved in 2021 by the director. This also paved the way for the final subdivision map to be recorded in 2022. In late 2022, the city received new house plans submitted by Ascenda Capital, which is the subject of tonight's presentation. As mentioned earlier, the final map of the subdivision has been recorded, paving the way for subdivision improvements to begin construction. As you can see in these aerial pictures, various subdivision improvements are underway, constructing streets, and other subdivision infrastructure improvements. The project site has a general plan land use designation of residential low density, which allows for a density range of 3.1 to 5 dwelling units per acre. Pursuant to state law, cities cannot count ADUs or JADUs towards the density limit. And the project, as proposed, complies with the general plan density range. The site also has a zoning designation of residential low density with a mixture of 6,000 square foot lots and minimum 10,000 square foot lots. Pursuant to state law, cities must allow ADUs and JADUs in all single-family residential zones throughout the state. The items before the Planning Commission tonight involve a determination as to whether the previous environmental assessment is sufficient for the proposed house plans, the architecture of the project as part of a minor design review, and the setback reductions as part of the adjustments request. The Planning Commission will also be reviewing how the JADUs comply with state law. The project consists of 58 single-family homes, ranging in floor area from 1,000 to 1,300 square feet, 58 junior accessory dwelling units, or JADUs, with a floor area no more than 500 square feet, and 53 detached ADUs with a floor area no greater than 800 square feet. The project proposes three different house plan models with two single-story plans and one two-story plan, and uses architectural themes reflecting mid-century modern, modern farmhouse, and modern prairie architecture. There's also a 2,400 square foot private clubhouse that's proposed for residents. This slide shows some architectural renderings of the proposed house plans. In the top left is Plan 1, which uses mid-century modern, has stone veneer and gable lapsiding in the gables. Plan 2, which uses the modern farmhouse with board and batting and lapsiding. And Plan 3, which has brick veneer and a stucco base. The project also includes a variety of accessory dwelling units. These accessory dwelling units, as required by the city's municipal code, reflect the same architectural themes of the primary dwellings proposed. Those that provide pedestrian access and entrance to the JADU and ADU units located towards the rear of the properties. Main access to the main structure to the primary dwelling will come off of the street frontage. As mentioned earlier, the project also includes a private clubhouse facility for the future residents. This clubhouse will include a leasing office and various outdoor amenities, such as a swimming pool and a fitness room. This slide is an architectural rendering of the proposed clubhouse. It reflects mid-century modern themes similar to the houses in the subdivision. As proposed, the project meets the parking requirements as outlined in the city's municipal code. State law governs parking requirements that cities are allowed to impose for ADUs and JADUs. In this case, the project is proposing one garage space and one driveway space for the main dwelling, one garage space and one driveway space for the ADU, which exceeds state law requirements, and approximately 250 on-street parking stalls for guest parking and for the JADUs. All of these on-street parking stalls will be provided internal to the project within subdivision streets and not in Keating Park or on California Drive. As mentioned earlier, the application also includes a request for an adjustment to development standards to reduce setbacks for house plans. The approval for the Montessa subdivision in 2007 and 2016 established special setbacks that the applicant is requesting an adjustment for. These include a reduction in front setbacks, side setbacks, and street-side setbacks like for corner lots. However, staff has reviewed the application request for the adjustment and has determined that streetscape design and yard area would not be compromised with the adjustment. Because the project includes JADUs, it must also comply with state law. California government code requires that owner occupancy be enforced for all new JADUs unless the applicant is a housing organization. And this is defined as a qualified nonprofit corporation organized pursuant to Section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code. In order to ensure compliance with this, staff has proposed Condition Number 8, which requires the applicant to record a deed restriction, yet granting the city the right to enforce ownership of the project site by a housing organization. Fulfill the condition and to comply with state law, the applicant is proposing to partner with Integrity Housing, which staff has determined meets the definition of housing organization. To further comply with state law and the definition of housing organization, the applicant has agreed to restrict all JADUs as affordable to households at low or moderate income for 55 years, and this would be enforced through the condition. The table on your screen shows the low and moderate income limits for one-person and two-person households in Vacaville. Staff has also prepared a number of conditions of approval related to property maintenance, which requires a deed restriction to be recorded to prevent the sale of any lot without consent of city council. If the project is converted into a for-sale project in the future, the applicant must establish a homeowners association in order to ensure maintenance for common-use facilities such as the biseos and landscaping and for the clubhouse. Condition 14 also requires compliance with state law in regards to onsite management. And Condition Number 12 is an agreement between the city and the applicant wherein the applicant would pay twice the multifamily rate for each lot within ADU or the Community Facilities District in which the project is located, in this case, CFD 12. 2007, the project was originally approved, and which included an adopted mitigated negative declaration and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, or MMRP. These documents disclosed project-related impacts and stated that they would be less insignificant with mitigation measures. Because there was no movement on the project until 2014, when the property owner at the time wanted to move forward. At that time, staff reevaluated the original MND to see if it was still applicable. The previously adopted mitigation measures were still sufficient to mitigate project-related impacts, and these include things like pre-construction surveys for nesting species, tree preservation, and off-site drainage improvements. The applicant also needs to provide a written disclosure for new residents about Keating Park and activities going on there, such as baseball games, lighting, and noise. After 2014, no additional environmental review was necessary. The current proposal has one significant change, which is the ADUs and the JADUs. However, pursuant to California state law, ADUs and JADUs are deemed ministerial, which is exempt from CECL pursuant to CECL guidelines. And so the city cannot require any additional analyses, such as a traffic study. Staff has conducted multiple public outreach efforts as part of this project. In February, a new project notice was mailed to all residents within a radius of 600 feet. Staff heard back from 10 residents regarding the new project notice prompting the city to hold a neighborhood meeting on March 16th of this year. For this Planning Commission hearing, another 85 notices were mailed in that same radius. Prior to the staff report publication, we heard back from one person, which was included in the staff report. Public comments received since the new project notice was mailed have also been attached to the staff report, along with the applicant's responses to those public comments. Following staff report publication, we received 10 communications, which include communications from Mohan Maturi, Mike Comfries, John Price, Eugene Price, Robert Armijo, Stephen Hosking, Wendy Brecken, Armando Orozco, Wendy Brecken, Jan Ockwig, and Armando Orozco. These public comments touched on a number of items, such as the regulatory agreement. Specifically, the city will enter into a regulatory agreement to enforce units being rented at affordable income levels, as mentioned earlier in the presentation. There hasn't been any agreement that has been prepared, signed, or recorded, as Condition Number 11 requires that the applicant enter into a regulatory agreement for all lots containing a JADU prior to issuance of a building permit. There are also some concerns related to parking. Specifically, all on-street parking will be provided within the subdivision, within the new streets inside the subdivision. The applicant is not relying on parking on California Drive, which is not permitted and will not be permitted, and also in Keating Park. The project, as proposed, exceeds the city and state's parking requirements, and the project will also improve California Drive by accommodating wider right-of-way. There will be no parking allowed as part of this widening improvement on California Drive. There are also concerns expressed in the public comments received after this staff report publication regarding the environmental review. The MND that was prepared for the Montessa project evaluated environmental impacts of development at the site, and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program evaluated some of those pre-construction measures that we discussed earlier, such as the nesting surveys and the tree preservation. The applicant will still need to comply with this MMRP. Such, this include mitigation measures, such as providing written disclosures to residents about activities at Keating Park, as mentioned earlier. The city's municipal code and state law allow reaffirmation of previous MNDs if there are no substantial changes that result in new significant environmental effects. And because ADUs and JADUs are exempt from CECL by the state, there is no substantial change as part of the project. There's also concerns about whether or not the staff report received legal review. The staff report did receive legal review by our city attorney's office. And then there were also concerns about wildfire threats and evacuations. The project was reviewed by the city's fire marshal for compliance with the California Fire Code, and it does provide three emergency access points. One on California Drive through the main driveway, another emergency vehicle access on California Drive, and then another emergency vehicle access from Skyview Place. In addition, the original project approval required dedication of open-space land along the hillside to the city, and this will allow the city to better conduct weed abatement and other fire prevention measures along the hillside. The subdivision improvements constructed as part of the project also provide the city with greater access to these hillside areas. And so to conclude, staff supports the project because it meets the required findings for approval, it complies with the general plan zoning and state law, and it complies with the development standards of the city as conditioned. And so staff recommends that by simple motion, the Planning Commission reaffirm the Montessa subdivision mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approve the minor design review and adjustments requests for the Montessa house plans, subject to the conditions of approval. And so with that, staff is happy to answer any questions. And also, the applicant has prepared a presentation if the chair would like to call the applicant up. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now entertain the comments from the applicant.
Good evening. I'm here representing Ascenda, and we're in contract for the property for architectural review. We have a quick overview of the project. Montessa is planned to be the best-in-class single-family for residential community located in the southwest of Vacaville. The community will contain 169 homes for rent, consisting of one, two, and three-bedroom homes. Montessa will feature the following home and community amenities, such as private entrances, outdoor patios with private patios, high-end finishes such as nine-foot ceilings and modern lighting, quartz countertops, stainless steel appliances, resort-style pool, private fitness center, and beautifully landscaped grounds with recreation areas. We will have professional property management. We're proposing full-time staff, which consists of a property manager, a full-time assistant or leasing agent, a full-time maintenance technician, a full-time maintenance tech assistant. We will also have third-party vendors to assist us, such as landscaping and pool maintenance. We have chosen Gray Star Real Estate Partners to manage the site. Gray Star is a global leader in property management since 1993 and currently manages over 790,000 units globally. Gray Star has a strong track record in Northern California with a total of 192 properties currently under management, totaling 50,000-plus units. Gray Star has a local team here in Northern California, with offices in San Francisco, San Jose, and Sacramento, with over 80 corporate team members. Gray Star specializes in managing new luxury communities, having successfully leased up over 100 apartment communities totaling 23,000 units in Northern California since 2000. And over 80% of the homes are single-story. All landscaping and yards will be maintained by the ownership. Our development plan does consist of four onsite parking structures, two in the garage and two in the driveway. There are 250 spaces on the street sign, which total 482 parking spaces or equivalent to 2.8 per unit. Our next slide shows the architectural site plan, with biseos between units for access, all visible spaces maintained by property management, and private yards in each unit.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Yana G.
Yana G. And you're with the project, or?
I'm with Ascenda, yes. I'm Senior Asset Manager.
Okay, I'll now take Commissioner questions. Starting with Vice Chair Rudin.
Thank you for the presentation. Can, where was I? Can we go back to Slide 17? It's where it mentions age restricted. Okay, so all the JADUs will be age restricted to 55, so that will be for.
Am I? So, all the JADUs will be income restricted.
Oh, I'm sorry. I read that totally wrong. My fault. That was embarrassing. No, I'm good then.
Thank you, Vice Chair Rudin. Commissioner Banta.
Yeah, we can stay on this slide. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you as well. I actually was really excited about this project. Wait, we're asking questions, right? Oh, you looked a little confused. I was really excited about this project, and I thought, I love the idea of the build-to-rent. My questioning about the income limits, where did we get those income limits from?
So these income limits are defined by the state, by California Housing Community Development.
So these are from the 2023 California state income limits that were just released a few months ago?
These are from the housing element, which I believe takes...
22.
22.
But they would be updated to reflect 23.
23. Okay, I was gonna say, because I believe 23 is a little bit a lot higher, actually, than this. And my questioning for the project is, so Gray Star Real Estate Partners is the property manager. Where does Integrity Housing come into this? And then also, the different income limits, how are those going to be divided out amongst the different plans? Is there a percentage of the JADUs that are going to be low-income? Are there a percentage of the single-family homes that are going to be low-income, moderate income? Is a percentage of the whole project going to be low-income, moderate? Or is it going to be a range, and then we're going to be stuck with all moderate rental prices?
Does staff have an answer to that question, or?
I'm sorry, if that was a lot of questions.
The applicant can answer the questions about how the partnership with Integrity Housing is going to work. For the conditions of approval, it's going to be the applicant's responsibility to prove that the property has been transferred to Integrity Housing before we issue a building permit for the project.
Commissioner Christian Seabean, on behalf of the applicant. So I believe the income limits may be actually lower than what is published.
Okay.
I mean, sorry. The actual limits are higher than what is shown on the slide.
Right.
And so I think we have those numbers. You want me to read them off?
I thought they were like 64,000 and 94,000.
So, it looks like the two-person moderate is 108,000-ish, and the one person is 94,000-ish.
Right, so that's a lot higher than what that is.
So, point of clarification, is that for a family of four, or is that for two persons?
Two and one.
Right.
So, I think we're looking at the same.
Correct.
Okay, and that's for the moderate level, which is 120 AMI.
Okay.
And then, as to Integrity Housing, the applicant's intent is to transfer ownership either to Integrity Housing or to a single-purpose entity that is controlled by Integrity Housing prior to issuance of the first building permit on this project. You know, it hasn't happened yet, but it's a transaction that's underway. The other question, as far as mix, right now, we're just reserving, you know, we're going to work with our partners on how the income mixes will be done. It is probably going to be a mix of moderate and lows, but we are not committing at this time to any specific mix. We just see how, what would work well for the site and work for this project and what our partner is looking for. Can I answer your questions on that?
Kind of. Is there a point when we would know when that is?
The regulatory agreement is, will deed restrict the, and those deed restrictions might be at 120 AMI, and then it will be up to the ownership to decide, you know, which households they lease to.
What is to, where do we, where can we know that the ownership is going to make it at, some at the 79%, and not all of them at the 120%?
We aren't committing to a specific mix. We're committing to 120. There's no obligation to provide any affordable units on this project.
There's no guarantee that any of these are going to be affordable for low-income.
They likely would be, but we're not committing to that.
Okay.
Sir, can you repeat, that there's no obligation to provide any?
We have no, there's no BMR requirement on this project. These are being voluntarily offered.
Okay. Is that common? Not have a requirement, it's just being offered?
The city does not have an inclusionary zoning ordinance that would require subdivision, so...
But is that common? How do you, how would you respond to that specific question?
The question being?
No, that answers my question. Is there any way that we can get it to be required? Or are we not within, is that not within our bounds?
Because this particular prod, because the city does not have an inclusionary zoning ordinance, the ability to include affordable units is at the discretion of the applicant.
Okay.
And I guess, so that didn't, you raised a question for me there, because I, so how would this compare to other similar projects in Vacaville in terms of this type of, notwithstanding the lack of an inclusionary zoning ordinance? I think that's a separate question for me than how would, how this specific project would compare to other similarly situated projects.
I can take that one, Chair Klein. We don't have a lot of projects in Vacaville that are voluntarily offering to deed-restrict their units. I am aware of only one precedent, which is the North Village Area Plan 2, where they are proposing to deed-restrict their ADUs. This is the second project where, in working with staff and considering the city's housing strategy and housing element, the applicant has offered to accept a requirement to deed-restrict units. But as the applicant explained, and we worked with them a lot on this, they weren't comfortable agreeing to restrict a specific number to the low-income category that they were willing to commit to. They mean, they could all be moderate-income, some of them could be low-income, and that's something they'll work out as they, if they push forward with the project.
Very much, Dr. Morris.
Yeah, I do have more questions, but we can go on if we can come back to it.
Please.
I might be a little bit behind on this, because I did join in March or April. When did this change to a build-for-rent? I noticed a lot of, there was questions from the community about not understanding that this was a build-for-rent and not a build-for-sale. And I just, since I'm, I just wondered if I could be caught up.
Yeah, so the application for the specific build-for-rent community is this application, which was received December 2022.
Okay, December 22. And then I noticed that we are reducing the setbacks, correct? What's the reasoning for that?
The applicant can answer the reasoning for the setback reduction.
I was just curious.
Good evening, Jeff Potts, SDG Architects. The setbacks, really, the request that we're making is to have the setbacks meet the city's standard setbacks. In the case of this particular site, the previous PD was written with more stringent setbacks. You know, our reasoning is to meet the standard setbacks for the RL6 and 10, and it allows us to fit the ADUs with a reasonable yard size for each of the three units.
Thank you. Another question that I have for staff, and again, I might be catching, getting caught up. Is the 600 feet that you give out public notice for the community, is that common? Or is there a way that we can make it so that there's a larger way to give public notice? Because I feel like a lot of people were concerned that they didn't get, they weren't in that room, but it's still affecting them.
Yeah, so the 600-feet radius is our standard notification radius.
How do we make it so that I feel like the community is asking for a larger radius? Is that possible ever?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Banta. We have an adopted public outreach strategy from the council, and it really did not, at the time it was developed a couple of years ago, did not call for revisiting our notification standards. It did set forth some new kinds of notification, but nonetheless, at that time, some decisions were made to not broaden the notification. What I would say is, when we have projects like this, if people find out about the project and contact us, we will add them to an email list. We will notify them. And then on some of our projects, we are expanding the notice boundary, and it's really been kind of on a case-by-case basis in the absence of an adopted policy or regulation.
And then to that also, I remember, I think it might have been a strategic planning meeting, or maybe it was a council meeting, I'm not sure. You spoke about the community development having like planning signs, like at all the different spots. Where are we with that?
A little off-topic, but I'll answer the question. The city manager at the strategic planning session has asked, asked the council if they were interested in installing onsite signs to let people know when a site is planned for multifamily housing, or a park, or a school. And so we're actually working on getting that first set of signs up over the next couple of months.
Okay, because I think that would have been nice.
It wouldn't be for a private development project at this point. This is more focused on undeveloped sites in established neighborhoods, letting people know what to expect.
Okay, cool. That would be nice, I think, for all the people in the neighborhood that do drive by the street. If there's a sign, you see it, and then you'd be able to ask. If there's a QR code, you can scan it, and then go directly to your guys' plan, see all of it. We could probably answer more questions that way. I think I'm good for right now. Thank you.
We can come back through.
Okay.
Thank you for those questions.
Because I have a whole other list.
Thank you, Commissioner Banta. Commissioner Lightfoot.
So, my question, one of my questions is about our restrictions on cul-de-sacs. And I believe that we have a restriction on how long a cul-de-sac can be, or how many houses can be on a cul-de-sacker court situation. And because this project only has one access out, I'm looking at, get a definition on why this isn't considered a cul-de-sacker in that same bounds? And if this would meet those standards, if it was considered a cul-de-sac? Because there's only one exit route, actually, in this, this project.
Clarification on the item tonight is, on those house plans that are being proposed on the subdivision improvements. So, if we go back to the original 2007 and 2016 approvals that were granted, those vested the rights for the subdivision of land. So, at that time, there was an evaluation for access, and it was determined that the access point for California Drive for the main entrance with companion emergency vehicle accesses also fronting towards California Drive, but then adjoining subdivision over at Skyview was sufficient access for the fire department to address the project needs in case of an emergency.
So, it's specifically for fire access that limits that, not, not traffic or anything like that?
I can't speak about the particular standard that is required. I think we do have our traffic engineer that could speak about it.
Thanks. Gwen?
Are we on? Yeah.
Yeah.
Gwen Owens, Public Works. So, basically, it's not a traffic issue. The part it is for you, for Public Works, it's really for utilities. And so 600 feet is the farthest you want to go before you can loop your water, because then you get stagnated water. I'm not the utility person, but I'm sure that the water is looped so that we have two points of connection. So, the 600 feet is one, fire department, unless you have a secondary point of access, and two, it's for water.
I got you. Okay. So, then it's on the same, same, second question's on the same thing. The fire access, that's mentioned on Skyview Place. It was, it's hard for me to find on the maps that were given to us. I think it's, it's got a weird jog in it. I just want to make sure that I'm looking at the right, at the right access. Because you see the one that's connecting on California Drive. I think that one's pretty visible, but how do we connect to Skyview Place? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, we're using Lot 13. Over here on the western portion of the site, there's a private drive aisle over here, and that will connect to the existing trails that go out through here that connect to Skyview Place.
And so this, this, this plan that makes, that why fire looked at this to, okay, that this was adequate with their access, I'm sure, right? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Vargas.
Yeah, so, thank you very much for the presentation, for the comment and input. So, I'm generally concerned about Keating Park. My son, and of course, there are several children that play baseball there at Keating Park. The, it looks like there are obviously space between the baseball fields. Can we get a little closer view to that? Thank you. Is there a wall that's going to go in between the property line and Keating Park, specifically those fields to the left that are, that are adjacent to the property itself?
The answer is yes, there is a portion that will have a masonry wall that will be provided from sound attenuation. But there's also going to be companion landscaping planted along there to help provide, it's going to be vertical landscaping, such as a Thai and cypresses, of that kind of sort, to help reduce the light pollution and the noise associated with activity. That was one of the items that was identified back when the original project was being evaluated, was what are the potential impacts associated with Keating Park and activities? And at that time, the determination had been made by the decision-maker that notification needed to be provided, as well as this, these landscaping improvements and these masonry walls. So, that way, anybody that would be residing within the subdivision would be aware that these are some of the things that you have to take in consideration.
Is that like bushes or something that's going to go up and kind of provide some, some blockage?
Correct.
Be a lot of lost baseballs. I get that.
A lot of broken windows.
A lot of, yeah. So, with that being said, and I think this was addressed regarding the parking. It looks like there's 250 spots that are slated for parking, correct? It, it would appear there's a lot of parking spots, more so into Keating Park. Will the property management company kind of regulate the parking? I do believe that there's a gate that closes in the entryway to Keating Park. Sometimes it's closed late at night, sometimes it's not. So, I don't know if, if that's city, or if that's going to be property manager, management company. Thank you.
First, Devante Duffy with Gray Star. It is a common practice that we would be managing the parking at the evening time with the staff living onsite, some of them. They would be there after hours to kind of watch that as well.
Gotcha. Okay. And the reason I, we had a lot of public comment, and a lot of concerned residents are pretty good at math, and so they see the amount of units in correlation to the amount of parking spots. I think one public comment that we had was partially 464 cars that they anticipate to be parked in this particular area. So, the concern is, there's going to be some overflow. Sounds like California Drive won't be an option, but overflow within the other residential portions of the neighborhood, and then also Keating Park. So, I just wanted to make sure that we're... With that, is there any lighting structures that are going to be going into, either in the development itself or on the outside of the development? This is a question coming from a concerned citizen. It's pretty dark back there.
Within the subdivision, there will be public improvements that are currently being constructed right now that will include streetlights.
Gotcha. Okay. That was all I had. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Vargas. Commissioner Fortney.
Yeah, a couple of questions for both staff and the applicant, and you guys can just jump in and come back. First, I want to double-check, on the junior ADUs, whether they're going to be low or moderate, that's to be determined. Will those all apply to, or be applicable to our arena numbers? I want to, one, confirm that I do see a garage parking spot and a driveway parking spot on the ADUs. You mentioned local management, and it sounds like you just confirmed you'll have onsite management living there 24/7. At the time of the report, you had not identified the site, management site. Do you know if you have that available for us? And if you don't, if you don't, okay, if you don't, probably recommendation to have it for the next hearing, that you can identify that for, for people of the public. And then going back to, we just talked about the sound wall, cypress trees, and some screening, excuse me, to Keating Park. Looking at this map and the residents on Sky, Skyview Place, Google Earth shows a lot of trees screening that, those, those properties. Unclear if that's on the open space or the future subdivision, or if it's in their backyards. If it's not in their backyards, I don't see anything requiring any screening from those residents. And if there is, can you let me know that there will be some vegetation screening from those lots in the upper-left-hand corner there? That's it.
Thank you for your questions, Commissioner Fortney. To answer your first two questions, yes, ADUs and JADUs do count towards arena numbers. And then to answer your second questions, the detached ADU will have a garage space and a driveway space.
City requirements, one space, we're providing two, correct?
Yes, the city requirement is one space.
Thank you.
And then on the adjoining subdivision for Skyview Place, there's no requirement for providing masonry walls or screening between subdivisions when their compatible uses our residential development. We will note that Skyview Place is at an elevated level as compared to this Montessas.
It is dropped down.
So, it does drop down. There are a number of existing trees that were acquired by the original environmental document to be preserved, and those are being preserved at the site.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Wilkerson?
Thank you so much for the presentation. Great questions. Commissioners, most of you took my questions, but real quick, landscaping and pool company, will those, will those be local services? Is that a confirmation? Yes? Okay, thank you. Who's going to enforce parking on California Drive? Let's say someone decides to park there, who's going to be responsible for enforcement of that?
PD does parking enforcement. So, basically, how that works is, if somebody's parked where there's no parking, there'll be no parking signs on the frontage. They call PD, and they'll come out. Somebody, it might be one of the PD volunteers that do that.
Okay. And then enforcement in Keating Park, the property management company, you guys, you guys are going to take care of enforcement? Is that what I heard? Because if someone, let's say there's overflow, someone comes in and parks a Keating, who's, who's going to enforce that as well? I thought I heard the gentleman.
Yeah, so I understand the, and Gray Star can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, Gray Star will manage subdivision parking and then also be available for complaints. You know, but it's not, I don't believe they're going to be actively patrolling Keating Park, but they would be, they're going to have 24/7 management onsite to accept complaints.
Okay. And then what school district is this project at?
Vacaville Unified.
Interesting. I'm good for now. Thank you.
Banta, do you want?
Yeah, I have more questions. The school district thing was one of my concerns, too. I know we don't have any say over the, oh, can you hear me now?
You're on.
Okay. I know we don't have any say over which schools they go into, but is there any consideration on communication with the school district about that this would be zoned in the Payden, Payden School? And that's already a highly impacted Title I school. And so my concern is that it's already highly impacted. They don't have enough resources, and now we're putting 170... And now we're putting 170 rental, rental units, which are again, lower income, possibly lower income to moderate income into that school district is when the neighboring right there, I bet that's in a different, that's seen a different school. Is there any way that we can have a communication with them or suggest rezoning or at least address this?
The Vacaville Unified School District is, uh, is a group that is actively involved in the planning and development activities that the city has. And so in this particular case, the way that we would go about with new subdivision developments is to inform them about and offer an opportunity to comment on these projects. In this particular case, because we're just dealing with house plant architectural review, it wouldn't have been one of those projects where we would send notification. Instead, at the time when development occurs for these projects, the developer would be responsible for paying school impact fees. And then the school district would be responsible for figuring out where students would go based off of needs assessments.
Okay. And then I did have a few more questions, if I'm able to ask. We had mentioned, you guys had mentioned that there's no guarantee that they'll be low income or the lower income bracket. I mean, realistically, like, they're most likely going to be moderate if they can because you're going to make more money off of it. So what can the city do or the housing? How, how can this work with the housing authority or the housing element plan? Are there subsidies that are needed? Or what is, what can make it happen so that there are some or there is a larger percentage that are low income? What can we do to get there?
Because a nonprofit housing organization is actually going to be the owner. They, despite, you know, you think of the developer, why would they ever give up money? They actually have a mission to provide housing and to support housing. And that's why that exception exists in state law. So I, I don't think you should assume there won't be any. But it, it's just unfortunately because they haven't finished their plan, we can't give you a number. But, but there is a nonprofit involved here and they support affordable housing.
When is their plan going to be done?
I don't know exactly the timeline on that, but they, obviously they're going to, before leasing up the units.
Okay.
Devonta, excuse me. Commissioner Wilkerson.
Saying on that topic, um, previously in other, in other plans and projects, what has the applicant and project done in terms of the, the low to moderate income? What have they done previously on other, other projects? Do we know?
I think that's a question for staff.
Okay, we answered it.
Clarification on, for this project, for the Montezza project or for?
In the previous, with, with the applicant or the, the housing authority, what have they done previously?
Christian, did you want to take that question?
Hey, everybody. My name is Matt Avital with Ascenda Capital also. I, I think the question is what have, as a company, have we been involved with? We have ownership of over 9,000 apartment units. And I'd say about at least half of those are low to moderate income through various income levels.
What's the usual makeup on a project?
Every project is different. It really depends on how it's financed and capitalized, right? If it's financed with low-income housing tax credits, it's going to be majority of low income if, if there's other financing structures. So it really depends. I think it's too early at this point to, to give you a direct answer to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, is this project financed?
It's, that hasn't been, that has been determined yet.
Okay.
Financing. I think first step is get plans, project plans approved, and then you move on to the financing cap.
So it's possible that this could be financed with those types of arrangements where a slow income would be?
I'd say there's a potential. There's, there's nothing, you know, in California, you have to go through a competitive application process. So it's not easy. It's not like you just apply and you get tax credits. But I'd say there is a, a potential.
Have anything that you're forecasting at this point? Or is it just that you're an open book?
It's, you know, the, the state is limited by the amount of bonds they can issue. So it's really impossible to tell until you actually submit a project.
Got it. Okay. Very good. Thanks, Matt. Commissioner Wilkerson, you good?
Good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for, uh, staff and applicant for hanging with us with those questions. I'm now going to open it up for public comment. So this would be the time for the public to line up at the podium and we'll give everyone three minutes per speaker. And if you could just say, state your name and so that we know who we're speaking with.
My name's Jean Price. I've been a landlord in Vacaville since 2002. I founded Crime Free Housing with the Police Department in 2006. And I moved the Opportunity House from the corner opposite 711 on Brown Street to my court, which I own Bennett Hill Court. And so I'm really invested in this community. I have a great partnership with my tenant families. My letter's in your packet. I have two big concerns. Number one is traffic. Between the AMPM curve and the Davis, the bridge right before Davis Street, I didn't bring my notes because I was actually on vacation and this upset me so much, I just drove four hours to be here. We've had at least three deaths in the last three years. We've had probably seven or eight that I can recall since I've owned this property. And we've had nothing done to mitigate people that drive that long stretch all the way from Almira and Peabody all the way down to that corner and go flying through that corner. My property used to be the Buena Vista. I now have a Royal Crossing as my name. We are right before you get to that bridge. It is a life and death action every time you pull out of that driveway to get into the street. And I would want you to at least consider add, because these houses are probably going to dump onto Alamo Lane, which is going to be another problem because they can't get the timing on the streetlights to where it will ever benefit us. And, and I understand that. We bought the property knowing that, but it just seems like we're adding more and more and more housing and not taking into consideration not only the safety, but the liability. I mean, we've had repeat accidents over and over. In January of last year, I think we had two people died again. I mean, it's just unbelievable. So I hope you'll read my letter about the traffic. My other concern is the drainage. A lot of people don't realize that between the bridge that crosses Alamo Creek on Alamo Drive to Peabody, and I believe further, we as property owners own the land to the center of the creek. And I spend $10,000 to $20,000 every year cleaning the debris out of the creek, getting all the dead wood off my side, making sure I have wind cell so my trees don't fall across to the city trail side. And I hate to say it, but I just don't feel like the city has really done a lot to maintain their site. And I've heard, well, it's fishing game and we can't do this and we can't do that. I live in a town where they are doing all sorts of things, up and down miles of creek after these last rains to make sure we don't have these problems. We have retaining walls, gabions of rocks that slid down into the creek. We have Sago palms growing up in the creek. Behind the Mobile Home Park, we have stack and pack concrete blocks that have fallen down into the creek and made just a mess. So I'm worried about flow because I'm the first person who gets hit. Real quick, I thought we had 58 parcels and I'm not understanding how that's 169 units. Access points for the fire. In 2020, we had a fire and there was evacuation on the other side of the street.
Sorry, Ms. Christ, it's Christ?
Christ, I'm sorry.
Christ, sorry. Christ. That's time.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for your comments.
Am I allowed to write you a letter with my additional comments?
Yes, absolutely. And we've all read your letters. And I remember your stats as well. Thank you. Yes.
Public Works are from staff to acknowledge her and check.
I think that's proper. Gwen, you'll follow up on this price? Okay. Thank you.
My company is, I'm a retired teacher at Vacaville Unified School. Been teaching here for 30 years and 20 years at that little spot in the corner. And I have a problem with looking at what's going on because. All right. In this area here, supposedly some tree in here, but there is no tree. I asked for information on. But this is what the large area. The other thing is, and there's nothing to fix this, is they raised that lot by about four feet. So my fence, when I look over the top of it, I'm looking right in there. So I, I need that fence redone. It's 20 years. It should be a neighborhood fence. So I've asked for that and I've not gotten any information. All right. So that's my issues. The other one is there is a wraparound for the fire department that goes through there. My concern is with all these cars parking there, they're going to walk right up and they're going to be parking their cars in front of my house because the road is parked and paved. So you can just wa, walk right up there and you can park and then there's no parking for me or the other neighbors. So that's an issue for us. The other thing about putting that particular road there, I've been there for 18 years. So I know that when the water comes down, it comes rushing down. And it's going to go right by my fence, which used to have a drain, which is now flat. So I hope it doesn't come into my backyard. And obviously, they have it leveled, so it's supposed to not do that. But with the rain that we've been getting, it could be anything. So that's a concern for me. So the ADUs, um, I just want to clarify in my mind what exactly that means. Those two units are a unit. So if they decided to sell that, all three would be sold. They're not going to be selling one, two, or three. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I just want to make sure before, so staff, do we understand exactly what the concern was about the people walking up? Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Kathy Baughman. I'm a resident on Skyview Place. I'm right there at the top.
Kathy, just a second. Corey, do you mind resetting the clock? Go ahead.
I want to talk about fire. A few years ago, we had a big fire and we were all evacuated. And we come down Skyview Place and there's one access for us into California Drive. During that evacuation, we were told by the police to go down California Drive. We were stuck for hours on California Drive during that evacuation. If that fire would have come down through there, we would have been like Hawaii in the cars. The evacuation plan probably really needs to be looked at. I wrote a letter during that time. After that, I was so frightened that day, sitting in my car, not able to go backward, forward, or no place to turn. So I think we really need to look at what traffic is going to be like, the accesses in and out. Also, there is no parking on California. There is no parking on Skyview. You're going to have problems in Keating Park. Because with that many units, and at first we were told that there weren't going to be this many units and the plan changed. I was on vacation when you guys had your last meeting. But there's going to be a lot of traffic problems through there and there is going to be problems with Keating Park and, and parking. I want to thank you for your time.
You very much, Kathy. I didn't catch your last name. Baughman. Thank you. We're, we're going to reset the clock, but can we get your first and last name?
Yes, Jessica Navarro.
Thank you.
And.
Just a second.
I feel like I'm at Toastmasters. Don't say arms and eh. Am I, am I already going? Okay. I was like, oh, well. Well, that's going.
Actually, I can. I'm smoother at this. Believe it or not, I only do this.
Give me extra time.
I only do this once a month. Okay. Floridus.
So Jessica Navarro, I live on California Drive. And since I moved here, the traffic has tremendously doubled. Due to the traffic coming the back end, it's horrible. Like, people go 100 miles an hour down there. I call CHP all the time and nothing gets done. I have two under twos and I'm a COVID baby mom. And my kids can't, we had to fence everything because of the fact that there's so much traffic going through. My concern is double traffic. Because if these are going to be people that are going to be day-to-day, there's going to be more traffic coming through. And either we need to put like those little, what do you call it? Step humps or whatever? Or like, we just need to down on that because it's, it's bad. I mean, it gets to the point where we have to take pictures of the cars and nothing else ever gets done through CHP. Another thing is, yes, my big concern too is the fire. When I got evacuated with my child, my newborn child, it was very devastating to not be able to leave. So I'm very concerned about that. Because it was very hard for me to, as a new mom, to sit there and wait to not know how I'm going to get out with my child. And sorry, I've been kidding, but it's very devastating. So if you're going to bring more units in, how am I going to get out? There's only one access there and then, and it's tight from on Alamo, where the new development is, to where the trailer park is, that road is very narrow. Very, very narrow. Yes, California is a lot larger, but it's going to affect my parking because I'm off on California Drive. So I don't want people to come in my, my front yard. I mean, I, even though I don't, I mean, it's public access, but it's like, where am I going to park if there's an overflow? And that's a big concern for me. They do, do need to make sure that there is like evacuations because there's nothing. Going back or forth, either way, it doesn't matter. It's very scary. And to add more, it's going to be crazy. Because I already see how much traffic is there. I'm a stay-at-home mom. All I do is sit in my front yard and watch crazy drivers pass by. And you know what? And I'm like, okay, well, you know, we take it day by day. And sometimes I follow these people because it pisses me off. And I know I'm scary to say, but I'm not like a, not trying to like, you know? But I do tell them, hey, you guys, I have a two-year-old. Come on. So I just, if that's going to be an issue, I, I really don't want these buildings.
Thank you very much.
I understand what you're saying.
Adding to the congestion at, okay, California Street. So using this.
It's at the narrowest part of California Street. How wide you increase the. Still at the narrowest area. I understand we're using this as a viable exit plan.
Sir. We, we, the public can't hear you. And some of us are having a hard time hearing you as well. If you don't mind saying you're the podium for us.
Okay. Well, we, we talked about using the, uh, the access road in the behind Skyview Place, right? That's just not viable. If you, I would challenge commissioners to actually go look at the plan and look at California Street, look at the access. That's just not a viable emergency exit, exit for fires. It just isn't. So I, I say at the end of the day, it's really important for us to maybe think about reducing the number of dwellings that they're going to create for the Montezza project. I just don't think California Street itself can maintain that type of traffic. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
So I'm Wendy Brecken and resident of Vacaville.
So I'm Wendy Brecken and resident of Vacaville for 32 years, maybe. I don't live in this area, but I've been following projects. And one of the things that they're asking you to do is to reaffirm the negative deck, the negative mitigated deck, or whatever it's called. And that's, you know, the environmental document, because they found a significant impact. The first time they looked at this project, now there's revisions. And instead of doing actual analysis of things that are being brought up here, this, the residents have done the analysis. They're saying traffic is unsafe. It's gotten crazy lately and people are dying. They're saying evacuation routes are a nightmare. If we have another 2020 LNU complex fire, there's going to be a huge problem. And also noise, I think it's the prisons not pictured there, but I think it's behind Keating Park. Is it CMF? Anyway. But you've got noise from that. You've got Keating Park. You've got increased traffic noise. None of this has been evaluated. So, so what's the law? The, the staff says, well, the staff ignores, there's a municipal code that says after five years, basically the environmental document is dead unless, and then there's some factors. That's not even analyzed. We haven't even looked at that. Then there's the state law that the staff did bring up, it's section 15162, which then they say, oh, this project, these revisions are in the scope of the prior project. That's not the law. That's, I don't know what they're analyzing. The, the law is extensive and I sent an email to you guys about it. And specifically, if there's a new information of substantial importance, which was not known or could not have been known, with the exercise of reasonable diligence at the time of the previous EIR or NEG deck was adopted, then you have to look at things and you have to analyze these factors. And I don't have time to talk about all these factors and what should be analyzed, but neither has staff. So basically, they're giving you a recommendation with, with an issue and a conclusion and no analysis and incorrect law. So I don't think you can approve In addition to the environmental issues, they, they stuck in a, I don't even know what this is called, regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenant that's unsigned and not recorded.
All right, Ms. Brecken.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We did receive your letters and I know many of us have read it. Thank Okay, let me.
Hi, Alicia Minion again. Actually, don't live in this area, but I do follow a lot of projects like Wendy does. And I've actually been studying affordable housing projects, not just in this city, but other areas of the state. So I was unaware that, I didn't realize that the city actually already deeded the land to Montessa Vacaville LLC. And I saw that on the
Saying, shaking heads. I'll stop here.
So I saw on the recorder, the county recorder, that there's a deed between Vacaville and Montessa. So the deed, so I didn't have time to go to the county, but I'd like to know if the land has been deeded. But if it hasn't, great, don't. When a government entity gives something of value to a private entity, it must provide a public purpose, a public benefit. The income here in Vacaville, the area median income is 112,000. They can, they can rent to everybody that makes 120% of the area median income. So they mentioned 108,000 and 8,000. These are people that can pay market rent. The market can bring this housing. Okay, just one. The market could bring this housing. The rents they will pay will be equivalent to market rate. That is not a public benefit. The city should be utilizing their land. The most valuable asset is land. The city to give this land to a private developer when there's no guarantee in terms of affordability is outrageous. Think about it. The people that need the housing are people that make under 60K. Nobody in that bracket is going to be helped. This land must not be given to this developer for this purpose. It does not provide a public purpose. And in terms of the financing, typically they get a tax-exempt issue of bonds from the state. Tax exemption requires a public benefit. I don't see this. Now, we have no control over the bond allocation. That's the state treasure. But we have control over our land. Do not give this land to this developer. I, I just, I can't believe this is happening. It's outrageous. Now, the CFD number 12, no affordable housing project is paying Melrose. What is that? I mean, to me, if this was real affordable housing and you're assessing the CFD number 12, this is discriminatory. I would think you would have an issue with the Department of Justice. Okay? So somebody please help me understand the CFD number 12, why you would assess it over affordable housing. But the fact that it is being assessed, it just feels fake that this is affordable housing. And then in terms of the nonprofit, I think you really need to know who that is. I looked at the nonprofit. Sorry. I'll write an email, but please, I urge you do not vote for this. I want the land back.
I would like clarification as to the deed issue, please.
Sure. This is privately owned land. So there's no city-owned land involved in this situation where we were the original landowners. This has always been owned by a separate private property owner. There was a portion of this project boundary that was deeded to the city. And if you look at the area where there is an arrow on that map, that area is open space. That portion of the project was deeded to the city. So that way we could take on the responsibility of making sure that we could prevent the spread of wildfires by maintaining growing grasses.
Yeah. I don't want to cut too much into public's time. Thank you, Albert. And we will pick this up after public comment.
Good evening. My name is Mike Bowles. I live at 113 Skyview Place. You know, I kind of feel we were sold a bill of goods. Because when this first, this project first came about, you know, I've been there now nine years. And they talked about putting somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 to 78, 75 houses, nice houses. And I thought, okay, you know, I'm okay with that. That's not an issue. And then all of a sudden this came up. And we started looking at this. And I'm, I'm like, why? Why there? There's no infrastructure or who knows how many people we're, I'm looking at in my figure, I'm not a mathematician. But I look at the lots and I look at it, maybe four and a half people per lot or, or more, times three, 13, probably per lot. That's a lot of people. That's close to 800 people. You know, they don't have the infrastructure. There's no shopping really. There's no food. This is essentially apartment living. The other area they have access, or they have talked about was Morgan Park. That's right off Harbison Drive, right next to Safeway and all the other little shops and everything right there. Why not put the development that they want to put in somewhere else? Where they'd have that infrastructure. That's an issue. I looked at the parking. The parking is definitely an issue, but the population density right there, trying to get out on California Drive is unbelievable. We've been evacuated there in the last five years twice. Okay. And like the lady said, it's bad. It's hard to get out. As far as people trying to get out or parking there, you have two real outlets that people can park on Skyview Place. And there's no parking there now. We're really, we're crowded there now. I don't really, down where I live, I'm not really that affected. But up towards the top of the court there, if you have people parking there and walking down into the, into the subdivision, it's not going to be good. There's going to be a lot of people, especially if there's an emergency, we got to evacuate, it's going to be real hard. So I would strongly suggest that you go take a serious look at that area. How does it benefit the homeowners to do this? How does it benefit the people that are going to live there? And like the other lady said, getting out on Alamo Drive from Alamo Lane, good luck. It's not going to happen. You're going to be going all the way down California to Peabody and the traffic there is going to be backed up in front, you know, right there in front of the prison entrance. You know, I don't see a big positive to this. I would say that the best bet would probably be to look at putting less dense living arrangements there. And that'd probably be a lot better if you're going to do anything. Thank you.
Start the clock.
Right.
Thank you. I'm Marie Beth Adams. My parents and I live Creekside Court. Been there. We're coming on 50 years now. When I moved there, there was just nothing but beautiful orchards. I watched it develop. I used to work land use planning, by the way. So my concerns are obviously traffic. Has a traffic plan been approved? If not, please review it. Concerned also that the income limit has not been set. Skyview Lane and the fire, is that the only way fire can get in and out besides California Drive? There's only two places fire can go. Okay, concern. When we had the fires, both fires where we had to get evacuated, my parents are now 90 years old. It was very scary, just like the other lady said. Even though we live on Creekside Court, people were coming down Creekside Drive trying to get out. And there was no place to go. Even if you went, there's two ways to get out of Creekside Drive. There was nothing. There was no way to move them. We've got also at Solano, Solano, CDCR, Solano, they have a shooting range. Please put that in your notification to the tenants. Because when Southview got built, there was a lot of complaints. And it's like, I'm sorry, it was there before you. So please be aware of that. You know, that environmental document, 16 years old, that kind of bothers me. And what was the mitigation for the negative declaration? What, what had to get mitigated? Okay. So yeah, okay. And the partial wall. How high will it be? And how, how many spaces? I mean, how, how long? How big? Is it just, you know, half, three quarters? What's it going to be? And how high between Keating Park and the development? And quickly, quickly. Oh, next steps. Where do we go from here? What's the next step? Are we able to continue to comment? When does it go to city council? Does it go to city council? Those kinds of questions. Because yes, we've had three. I believe you had three. We've had three public hearings. I did like the one we did on, online. That was cool. But anyway, so I'm really looking forward to having more comments. But you guys had asked great questions, by the way. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And to clarify, the, these are recommendations to the council, essentially, the council.
Sorry, point of clarification on that.
Point of clarification, this project is under the approval authority of the Community Development Director. As the director, I have elevated that decision to the commission. The commission will be making the decision on the project this evening. Following the commission's action, a member of the public or the applicant can appeal the decision of the commission to the council. And in that case, there would be a separately noticed appeal hearing considered by the council at a date to be determined.
That's what I meant. Thank you. Is other members of the public wish to comment on the project? Okay, with that, we will close public comment and we will take it on for the, amongst the commission to deliberate. There were a number of questions that were raised. Would love to give Seth an opportunity if, if you want to. Albert, you look excited to make a comment?
I took really good notes.
Okay. Well, why don't we give you a chance to bond to some of the notes and then the commissioners will have questions for you.
Okay. At some point, I think it might be helpful for the commission to hear from our traffic engineer about what does traffic look like along California Drive?
Do you want to do that now?
We can. We can start off with that.
Other things, I was just going to address traffic as best I can. Okay, so I'm going to start with Alamo Drive first. Basically, so the first thing that was addressed was the timing of the traffic signals. We actually have a CIP project that we are just waiting on some material to actually start. And this is the Alamo corridor and the Peabody corridor that we're putting in advanced detection on all legs. So that would help with the, and as part of that project, we will be redoing the signal timing. So all along the Alamo and the Peabody corridor, we should see better flow of traffic detection. And it's not just for vehicular, vehicles, it's also for bicycles and pedestrians too. So we've got sort of state-of-the-art equipment. Like I said, we're just waiting on a couple pieces for us to be able to move forward with that. The next thing is the collisions. So I did pull the collision reports on Alamo Drive from Davis to Alamo Lanes from January of 2014 until June 30th of this year, because that's the latest information I have, because my information lags PD a few months. There have been a total of 49 collisions. There have been no fatalities. Last year, there was a fatality at Alamo and Nut Tree. So there was that fatality. I'm not sure typically if there's fatalities, I hear about them. I don't remember hearing about a, a second or third fatality last year on the Alamo corridor. That's the only one that I'm aware of. Regarding speeds, this was in Jean Price's letter. She talked about the posted speed limit. For the posted speed limit, we are governed by the California Vehicle Codes and the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices on how we set speed limits. And I won't bore you with the minutia of details of how we set speed limits. But the speed limit is set as at 40 miles per hour. For a different traffic investigation back in September of last year, we actually did collect speeds and volumes on Alamo Drive between Alamo Lane and Mariposa. The 85th percentile speed, which is the speed that 85% of the drivers drive at that speed or below, and that's how we set speed limits, and that's how we determine whether or not they're speeding, is 41 miles per hour. So we're in the parameters of what the posted speed limit is. Now granted, there are people that drive above that, but studies have shown that safe and prudent drivers drive about the 85th percentile, thus that's used to set speed limits. The ADT, the ADT is the average daily traffic, which is a vehicular traffic in a 24-hour period. It is just over 25,000 vehicles, which is 20,447 vehicles. This is an arterial, it's a four-lane road. It's meant to move traffic, you know, across town, you know, from one end all the way to the other end. I will have somebody contact Jean about the creek because that is outside of my area of specialty. So the next thing that they talked about was generally, they're talking about the trip generation of the project. Okay, so prior, you had 59 single-family homes. Okay. And when we look at stuff, so what we look at is level of service and our level of service is consistency with the general plan because we can't look at level of service anymore as part of CEQA. We look at vehicle miles traveled. There is a significant discussion with the applicant and our city attorney to determine that this project, for various reasons, and the applicant's attorney can explain it, is exempt from vehicle miles traveled. So that was not addressed because it was determined, California has a lot of housing laws and they're trying to promote all different types of housing. And so this is a little bit, that's beyond my area of expertise. So if you want to dive into that, you can have Christian explain that. So I only looked at level of service with regard So I only looked at level of service with regards to general plan consistency. So the intersection of, let's see, Alamo Lane and California, also Alamo Lane and Alamo Drive operates at an acceptable level of service, which our acceptable level of service is a D, A being the best, F being the worst. This project, as previously approved, would only generate 44 AM peak hour trips and 58 PM peak hour trips. Now, the project, you're, you're going from single-family detached to, yeah, single-family detached to single-family attached and also these ADUs and JDUs. So with what we have with our various studies that we have done, and we use, let's see, the Institution of Transportation Engineers, their manual for trip generation. This project would only increase in the AM peak hour by 36 trips. So it's 80 trips in the AM peak hour, and it increases 38 trips in the PM peak hour to a total of 96 total trips. So when we look at whether or not we do a traffic impact studies, we, we look at, is the area currently impacted? Do we have unacceptable levels of service? We don't currently have that. And what we look at is you need at least 100 AM or PM peak hour trips to even go from your marginally acceptable to unacceptable. We're not in that category. So we actually didn't look, I mean, I did this evaluation, but we didn't hire a traffic consultant to evaluate all the surrounding intersections. And if you want to stop me, feel free to stop me at any time.
So we were at 96 in the PM though, right?
Yeah, for this project in the PM peak hour.
So that before away from a significant?
And since the level of service of the surrounding intersections operate, and quality of life and level of service are two different things.
Correct.
So the level of service of the surrounding intersections, they operate very well. 100 trips is not going to trip you from acceptable to like a high D or an F in this situation. So that's why we didn't look at it for, to do actually a full traffic impact study.
So, and other commissioners, feel free to jump in. But so that, under VMT, would be a different methodology?
VMT is totally a different methodology. And so VMT is basically, and the way the city did VMT is we did by land use because that made the most sense. So we compare single-family to single-family, multifamily to multifamily. We have averages, the state required, or they had guidelines, they strongly encourage that whatever your current average was, that you were 85% of it. So you were 15% below what your current average is for new projects coming in. And so what they do is they look at your whole trip and not just a person, the whole household's trip in a 24-hour period. So, and it just doesn't end at my boundaries in Vacaville. So like if I commute to San Francisco, or I commute to Sacramento, or all of my other picking up my kids, et cetera, they look at all those trips. We actually did a, we hired a consultant to update our model to address vehicle miles traveled. We went through a significant amount, a significant effort to address vehicle, vehicle miles traveled in the general plan. We did a supplemental EIR to basically, you, what we did was we acknowledged, yes, we were going to be significant and unavoidable. We basically had a list, a laundry list of what you can include in your project to help mitigate those impacts, and we overrode it. So if your, if your project is consistent with the general plan and you come in, you basically tear off, tear off that supplemental EIR. So where we got into the conversation with the applicant and the city attorney was, I can't find somewhere that this project is exempt. If this project isn't exempt, I'm going to make you do VMT. And so they were able to find case law to determine that for housing reasons, and Christian can talk to you about that, that there was, we didn't need to do VMT.
So the project has no accounting for like doorway counts, you know, Amazon trips?
So
DoorDash?
Basically, we have, so things have changed a lot since the pandemic. And how we operate from a transportation perspective is different in the pandemic. It is, has totally changed from the pandemic. We are just now getting to a point in the near future that there'll be enough data for us to be able to determine how those travel patterns have changed. And what we need to do when we get there to that, it's probably a year or two off, is we need to actually update our travel demand forecasting model to be able to predict that. So what happens is when you have a major shift, I'm just talking about transportation, you need to have enough years that you, you basically come to a new norm and then have enough years after the new norm to determine what is happening and what is not. And we're not quite there yet with transportation.
We don't have the data. Do we, I want to cut to the chase on a question with, about evacuation routes. So what do we have, what data do we have to relay the public that we can get them out of this compacted area in a fire?
And we don't have anybody here from fire. They're really the ones that do the evacuation routes. They have some new systems in place about, you know, know your zone of like, you know, when to evacuate, et cetera. I don't know if Albert or Payman could.
You have Director Morris, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Klein. I was going to say what Gwen said, that since the last LNU fire complex, the city of Vacaville, along with other Solano County agencies, have taken a lot of steps toward improving evacuation events, and in particular, the New Year's Zone program. So just by way of example, when Sonoma County had the Tubbs Fire and 5,000 homes were destroyed in one night, it was chaos. Subsequent to that event, which was in 2017, Sonoma County and those cities came up with evacuable areas and plans and communication systems. And so a lot of that is actually happening in live time here in Solano County, informed by what happened with the LNU complex fire. So this is something that we do look at in the development review process. That's where the fire marshal, under the authority of the fire chief, is looking at evacuation routes in the project and how it's contributing or not contributing. But really, since the LNU complex fire, the biggest advancement that this city has made is with regard to the New Year's Zone program. And if we had the fire marshal here, she could give a lot more information, but I know she would say, go to the fire division's website. There's a lot of information about this program and what it's intended to accomplish.
Thank you, Director. Please show some respect. And can we have the cell phones enough with the cell phones going off? Silence them, please. Commissioner Vargas?
Yeah, just a quick question. I think you mentioned there was no traffic consultant hired for this project, is that?
Typically, what we do is because staff doesn't have, there's a lot of responsibilities staff has. I'm a licensed engineer, both civil and traffic, and I've been doing this for more than 30 years. I do traffic impact studies. Typically, what we do is, especially for private development projects, if we do do a traffic impact study, we collect the fee from the applicant and then hire a consultant for basically staff augmentation because we just don't have the time to be able to do it. So like I did the initial traffic evaluation. I looked at the level of service, determined it's not going to meet our threshold. So we didn't need to go out and do a specialized study for the project. And this is a typical process on every private development project that happens.
But to be clear, this is under LOS?
That's LOS. Now, if we have to do VMT because we have to run our travel demand forecasting model, I haven't run those models for probably 25 years. I don't have that expertise anymore to do that. So we would definitely hire a consultant to do that.
Thank you.
Good question. Commissioner Bonta?
I have a question. Okay, so I'm a really visual person, and I feel like a lot of people are. So for, are there any projects, any little subsets of this community in this city that are very similar in size to this project? Amount of houses that are in, and that square footage, or anything that where people can strive by it and see like, this is the size of the roads. It's similar to the size of the roads that they're saying, or it's similar to California Drive, it's similar to Peabody Drive. And they can see this is similar, this is not similar, or this is going to be wider, this is going to be smaller.
Maybe the applicant might have some locations. I'm unaware of any that are similar in Vacaville.
The city doesn't have any developments like this where there's a proposal to add an accessory dwelling unit and a junior accessory dwelling unit. If we're looking at different subdivisions that have comparable roadways widths and things like that, Van and Meadows has some examples of sub-portion. But that's a larger specific plan. This is an isolated infill development where it's around existing area with vacant land for some, many of years, so.
Any other questions? I think I have one or two more things.
I think I cut you off, so please.
Yeah, that's okay. No, that's good. Because I can go on. All right, so there was the comment about the traffic on California Drive. I didn't bring any speed surveys or volumes, but what we can do is we can collect those or look to see what we've done in the recent past. The Alamo one, we had recently done in last September in Alamo. Four-lane arterials are harder for us, for our staff to collect only because of the speeds and the volumes. And we go, we actually go out to a data collection consultant. California Drive, we can collect because it's only two lanes. But we'll basically go and collect the data, and I'll follow up with the resident about the speeds and volumes.
So earlier, Noah mentioned the right-of-way would be widened?
Correct. So the frontage improvements would be constructed. It would match what's to the east and west. There's no parking on the south side of California Drive, but you will have a bike lane.
Will it still be a two-lane road, though?
A one lane per direction.
Okay. And what traffic calming provisions will be featured?
Basically, we do not do speed bumps because it impacts fire response times. For their project wouldn't necessarily, so we have people that have speeding requests all throughout the city that we actually evaluate. And how we determine is if their speeding is, whatever the posted speed limit is, if you are seven miles per hour over the posted speed limit, then we basically say that's speeding. With regards to what traffic calming we have, there are a lot of other places that we are looking at that are competing for our time. We do refer to PD. We do ask that they have the trailers deployed. But with, with equipment like radar feedback signs, there's only so much money to do that. We typically try and do those at schools. And then there's also replacement costs. So for California Drive, we probably wouldn't have anything other than having PD go out there and then also asking them to place the trailer up there, the speed trailer.
Okay, so the project does not have any inherent design features that would assure a mother of two, under two, that it's going to not impact her children?
So I wouldn't want to impose something on them, but I know other projects, they have put up radar feedback signs. That would be the only thing that I would say that would be, and it's, it's more for radar feedback signs. It's worked really well if you're not paying attention and you start driving over, you know, the speed limit of like, oh, I need to drive within my parameters. If you're going to speed, people tend to speed. And unfortunately, over the COVID time, we've gotten some bad behavior on drivers out there with speeding that we're still trying to address. So that's all that I had on note. Any other things?
I would hang out if I were you.
I'm not going anywhere. I'm just going to sit down.
Thank you. Why don't we pause there and go to Commissioner?
Just real quick, since we're on traffic, can we have you speak on the exemption?
Christian?
We're talking about that, that was brought up.
Sure. So just to remind everyone where we are with this project, the tenant map has already been approved. The final map has been recorded. Subdivision improvement agreement has been entered into with the city, with the current owner. Those improvements under a grading permit are currently underway. And so the design of the subdivision is set, where the roads are, the, the issues you're mostly hearing about EVAs, that, that's being built right now. We're here tonight for a house plan review, which is the architecture that goes on the lots that currently exist today. And so under SEQA, there's a case Navy Broadway, Broadway complex that says essentially the, the scope of the SEQA review you do is, is limited by the discretion of the decision maker. You don't generate paper to generate paper. Can the decision maker use that information and change the project is sort of the test? And most of the concerns you've heard about traffic are related to LOS issues, as expressed by the public. We're concerned about congestion and delay, intersections. That's not a SEQA issue anymore. What Gwen referred to was VMT, which is vehicle miles traveled to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from that project. And that's the same true here tonight. The ADUs, which are the only change, right? The 58 lots exist, or they're there. And so the change is their ADUs, and under state law, that's a ministerial decision by you. You don't have the right to say no. You don't have the right to condition them. And so you can't do anything to change the emissions associated with those units, which means there's no obligation to study what those emissions are, which is the VMT analysis. And so that's, that's what we are on.
We're not talking about GHGs, though. I mean, no, I have not heard anyone bring up greenhouse.
That's what VMT is an analog for. How, not how much traffic is there going to be? It's how far is the person living this home going to drive when they go to the grocery store and to their job and coming back and dropping off their kids? It's not about a road being congested. It's about how many emissions are coming out your tailpipe because you're driving farther. Because if you're saying a rural residential lot that's 20 miles from town, you're going to drive a lot more. There's no traffic on that road at all. It's a farm road. But that has the highest GHG impact because that person's driving the farthest. And so that's what VMT is analyzing. How many miles are you driving? And the state has an interest in reducing those miles people drive because it helps climate change. And it's not about traffic as we understand it as a layperson, which is congestion and delay.
Yeah, I think the concerns we're hearing from the public, public is not saying, I, so I don't want to get too much into this, but what I'm hearing is that people are concerned about their safety. We've heard a lot about wildfires. And I understand the point you're making, though. Mike, did you have anything else?
We were on traffic, so I thought this would be, yeah, what time to address that.
Thanks, Christian. So with that, I'll open it up to other members of the commission. Vice, Vice Chair, why don't we let the commission drive the interaction with the staff?
I don't have any more questions, but is it time for Commissioner comments? Are we still doing questions? If we're still doing questions, I'll comment later.
Well, Steph, or Albert, did you feel compelled to add anything before we get to Commissioner comments?
Well, there were a number of public comments, so it's at the discretion of the chair to decide whether.
We definitely want to hear from you. Yes.
Okay. I'll go from the notes I've taken from individual public commentators. The first commenter mentioned concerns about traffic safety. And I believe Gwen took care of that particular comment. There was a question about how many units are being proposed on the 58 lots. There is 58 lots, 169 units. The way that breakdown works is that every single lot will have a single-family home. And within that single-family home will have a junior accessory dwelling unit. So there's 58 single-family homes, 58 attached junior accessory dwelling units that are part of the building. And then 53 of the lots will contain detached accessory dwelling units. The reason why it's not 58 is because the lots that are abutting the open space area to the southeast corner of the project site have to maintain adequate buffer between the hillside area for fire concerns. And so those lots do not have detached accessory dwelling units. So the combination of all of that is where we arrive at 169 units. There was a concern about drainage, the subdivision. We do have the applicant's engineer that's here that can help discuss what's been done for the project to alleviate his concerns. If you'd like to pause for that, or I can keep going. Keep going? Okay. Commenter number two, there was a comment from a resident about the concerns of their property line abutting the renters' property line in a large area of usable rear yard space. When we look at development, we look at what does the code require for screening between land uses? And it has to do with compatibility. If you have a land use that's next to an uncompatible use, then that warrants certain improvements such as masonry walls, screening, and other things like that. In this case, because you have single-family residents next to single-family residents, our code does not require additional screening improvements. There was a comment about, a concern about people parking within the Skyview subdivision and walking on the fire lane to access their homes. Again, this comes in to term. Again, this comes in determined when we look at how do projects comply with development standards? We've got standards within our code about what is the applicant obligated to provide for parking for each unit, and they're meeting that requirement. This would be more of a concern that is shared with the applicant about how are they going to enforce parking on the site? And we've heard from their property management company about how they're gonna do that. Second commenter also had a concern about drainage at the appropriate time, the applicant's engineer. There was a question about selling ADUs and junior accessory dwelling units. There are conditions in place that this project in its entirety has to be owned by a nonprofit corporation. But if there is an event where the corporation at some point in the future wants to sell individual lots, there needs to be approval from city council first, and then the developer would be responsible for setting up an HOA to maintain all the interior landscaping as well as the private clubhouse that's interior to the site. Commenter number three had concerns about evacuation plans. I think we talked about that, as well as parking concerns for Keating. The same comment about Skyview, people parking in Skyview. It applies to Keating Park where when we evaluate these things, how does a project provide parking? And then it's up to the property management company to make sure that they're informing their tenants where they're supposed to be parking and where not to be parking.
Can I ask you a quick question about that? So the Keating Park is gonna be policed by this private developer?
No, it wouldn't be policed by.
Unpack that a little bit for me. How do they enforce parking on, in Keating Park?
It wouldn't be enforcing parking in Keating Park. It'd be enforcing parking for the residents within that area. So the obligation is, does the project provide sufficient parking to meet city standards? If it does, then it's presumed that everybody would be parking within the site, and the developer is responsible for maintaining all the parking within that site. Number four had concerns about speeding and concerns about wildfire. This project site is partially located within, or it is located within the moderate wildfire area as well as some areas within the city. It's not, nothing to cause pause, but there are provisions that have been built into the design of the subdivision such as buffers away from open space, such as dedicating a portion of open space to the city so that way the city can maintain it, as well as adequate access to fire lanes to adjoining properties. And so those things have been built into the design of the subdivision to address how wildfires would work and could potentially impact this particular community. The fifth commenter had comments about traffic and whether California can maintain, could accept the traffic associated with this subdivision. And I think the traffic engineer spoke about that. Commenter number six had concerns about reaffirming the mitigated negative declaration and that the code says that if you have an environmental document that is older than five years, that it's dead. So in this, the citations that are within the municipal code as well as within the SEQA guidelines doesn't say it's dead. It says that under certain circumstances, you should reevaluate the environmental impacts associated with the project. How does the project impact that environment that it's in? And when we looked at the environmental impacts associated with just architectural building design, because that's what this project is about, we found that the proposed architectural buildings and them being cited on the site, meaning all the setbacks, with the exception of adjustments, it didn't present any new impacts. An example of a new impact might be that prior to development of the subdivision improvements, a locally affiliated tribe informed us that there might have been remains on the site that we didn't know at the time when the environmental document was circulated. And so that would be a situation where new information is present. We need to circulate a new document that discloses impacts and how we're going to mitigate those situations. But because this particular project is only associated with architectural review and that all the previous approvals had been met, all the mitigation measures had been met for the installation of the public improvements, there wasn't any reason, there were no new impacts associated with architectural buildings. Number seven, there was a concern about city owning the property and then deeding it to the applicant earlier. I think we clarified that one. There was a question about the CFD and what the developer is obligated to do. For this particular project, the developers obligated, they're already annexed into community facility district number 12, so they're obligated to pay a certain fee per single family residence. What they have offered to do is to pay twice the amount of the multifamily rate because they have additional ADUs. And so that's higher than what they would normally be required to pay for the project. There was a commenter that was concerned about whether or not there's infrastructure to serve the sites. There is infrastructure to serve the site. They're being put in as part of the public improvements. Our utilities department and public works department looked at the project and the additional units, and they, there is capacity to serve these additional units. Comment number nine had concerns about traffic, concerns about the income limit. I think we've, we've also touched on those topics. There was concern about fire access, which we as well also touched on. Notification to tenants about shooting range. There is a requirement within the mitigation for the applicant to notify future tenants about activities in Keating Park, but it doesn't say anything about the shooting range. So that might be leeway that the commission could be feel for adding condition about additional mitigation, sorry, additional conditions for notification. The applicant could also speak on whether or not they're willing to add that. There was a question about what was the type of mitigation that was originally required for the subdivision improvements? There were requirements for reinforcing up on the hill a dam that contained water and making sure that there was a way for drainage to occur from the hillside area. So there's mitigation on that. There's mitigation on making sure that prior to them starting any construction activities at the site, that they conducted pre-construction surveys to make sure they were in our avian species at the site. The requirements for the preservation of large oak trees that are abutting the Skyview subdivision that are being preserved right now. And then also, we touched on the mitigation requirement for notification for future tenants that there is activity occurring over at Keating Park. And what's next for the project? I think we touched on that about, this is subject to the planning commission's decision tonight. I think that's it.
Good question for you, Albert. With the new environmental impacts example you gave with the travel resources, for instance, to clarify, the ADUs and ADUs are not a new environmental impact because SEQA's treatment for them exempts, or what does that mean?
It means that the state's in a housing crisis. There's not enough housing. And so the state has passed laws that says we need to allow accessory dwelling units for single family homes. We need to allow junior accessory dwelling units for single family homes. They're not an impact.
Yeah, just to air that out so that people understand that. It's not, not that it's not an impact, it's not, under the code.
Under state law.
Yeah, state law has changed this.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. No, everybody in the room needed that, thank you.
Really?
Yeah, I think it's a big deal. And I think Steph, if you wanted to elaborate on it, the buy right for ADU and junior ADUs, briefly, this would be the time so that everybody.
Yeah, I mean, just so people understand that SEQA would look at this as a, as an impact if we wanted in this environment, but there was a change of state law, correct?
Correct. If we were looking at a single family development that was going to multifamily development where you were increasing the number of units, that's a little bit different because there are different impacts associated with multifamily development. But because state, the state has said housing is important, you have to find different ways to be able to provide housing, accessory dwelling units for, that can be rented out at lower rates because they're smaller. In this particular case, junior accessory dwelling units are no larger than 500 square feet when they're attached to the house. And then accessory dwelling units are no larger than 800 square feet. And those are substantially smaller than you might find for a rental for a house. That could be anywhere from 1,700 to 2,500 square feet. And so the state says, make this a priority, pass legislation that says you don't need a, you don't need to conduct environmental review. These are ministerial types of things. So when somebody comes in for wanting to build an accessory dwelling unit in their backyard, it's a building permit that's issued over the counter. The state says, we've got all the standards that you need. You can adopt them as an ordinance, or you can just use what's in state law. As long as they comply with all of this, you have to issue a building permit.
Thank you for explaining that. Commissioner Wilkerson?
Yes, thank you, Albert. Thank you for answering the questions. This one's a very, 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 very tough one for me. I'm for housing. I'm for housing for all. I like the for, I like the product. I understand there's a need, I understand we're in a housing crisis, but I know people. I have been one of those potential offenders on California Drive. I've driven that road as a shortcut many times. And, you know, I know I grew up playing ball at Keating Park. I know there's gonna be people parking there. And so I understand the residents on Skyview and on Creekside Court, the impact that they're gonna have. But it's a tough one because just in front of us, it's just to reaffirm the mitigated negative declaration and approve the minor design review. You know, the, a lot of things that are being brought up, I feel like the streets are already designed, right? We can't say, hey, we want more access roads, we want less access roads, we want you to do all those things. I think we, that, that process is behind us. As unfortunate as it is, you know, that, that process seems to be behind us. And so we, we have this decision in front of us just with these, with these items. And so, but I know people, you know, I know what the impact is gonna be in that area. And so I, I would like to hear from the rest of the commissioners, but this, this one's definitely a tough one.
Thanks, John. Why don't we start from this direction? Those are all the comments, right? Okay, appreciate you for doing that. And also nice tie. Sorry, had to let you know.
My only comments are, is we have the applicant here today, and I guess we either look at adding conditions to you or something that you volunteer. We had traffic engineer talk about the radar on California Drive. That could be a calming issue. Whether you'd be looking at something to doing that, or we could come back as a body and make that a condition. The notification of the noise would also be an option that you could do now. And while you, we have you and some of the neighbors here to address and at least have a discussion with them on the good neighbor fence, if you're willing to do those things, or do we need to go down the route of making it a condition? So I'll, I'll allow you to come back to me on that and ask the rest of the commission to jump in.
Thank you, Commissioner Deportney. Commissioner Vargas?
Yeah, you know, kind of in the spirit of what Commissioner Wilkerson said, this is a tough one. Some of the testimony tonight certainly has been moving from citizens who reside in that area and just overall in general. I am concerned, I was not aware of the, and I get that we didn't hire a traffic consultant, but some of the, again, some of the information that was provided, just lived experience for the fire, the last fire, I didn't realize it was such a traumatic experience for folks. And it seems as if that's still a risk. That's based on the information that's been provided by staff, the developers, that, that's kind of my chief concern. Keating as well, it's near and dear to my heart, as you know, Commissioner Wilkerson says. My son plays at Keating. And again, what happens after the baseball games are over with certainly would still be a concern, given the development there. But I think that's kind of out of our control, and I don't think there's any assurances that property manager is able to kind of regulate what goes on there. Doesn't seem like you can. So still a lot of unknowns. But yeah, I just, just to add that commentary, so I'll let everyone else speak.
Parks? Commissioner Lightfoot?
Thank you. So I still feel like we haven't, we haven't addressed a main concern of our neighbors, which is, is evacuation from fires. And it's just not available for us right here to, to, to get information from fire on how we're implementing plans to improve that. But I, I'd love to hear from staff on an upcoming meeting that we can address to the public what measures we're taking to improve that for the future. I know you said they're available on a website, but public needs to be made aware of the steps that Vacaville's taking to mitigate that in the future. Because it is clearly, our neighbors are concerned with that, and it's going to be a continued problem going forward. But again, like our, my fellow commissioners said, there's, it feels like it's outside of the bounds of what we're looking at for this particular review. I will tell everybody that's here, I travel a lot, my family travels a lot from the community center to our home, which is nearby. And my children affectionately call California Drive the pretty way. So we can avoid going down Alamo, take a little longer time and use that. So we, we do use that ourselves, and I, I hear what you're saying. That's about all I got.
Commissioner Banta?
Yeah, thank you. I would echo what Wilkerson kind of and everyone else has said is, I think the scope of what we're talking about here is the review plan design and the mitigated negative impact. And again, like I said at the beginning, I love this project. I love the build for rent idea, I do. My issue is with the income, and I think that's not what we're here discussing right now, that we're not at that stage right now. So I would like to hear more about that. My biggest thing that I'm hearing is that this is a space to hear community concerns, correct? And even though that's outside of the scope of what we're voting on right now, I really appreciate everybody coming and speaking all of their concerns. And I hear like, there's a, I hate to say, but like a lack of communication maybe on like, what are the fire escape plans? What are the traffic plans? And I know the staff is working really hard on all those things, but how do we get that information to you so that you know that they are working on it? Or that, that seems to be kind of what's lacking, I feel like. And I just, I don't know what the spaces are, what the answer is, but I wish we could have more of that. But other than that, I love the project, and I'm just really excited to hear more about the income levels and what we can do to make it more affordable, more so than moderate, because moderate's not very affordable.
Thank you, Commissioner Banta. Vice Chair, Rudeen, I do have a quick question for, for Dr. Morris. Is this something that could come back to us? Or what are the range of, maybe, and just maybe, we don't have to answer now, but can we think about what the range of options would be for us?
Issue of fire evacuation? Like the broad, broadly, the issue of fire evacuation?
Address some of the issues, including fire evacuation.
For this project, as several of you have acknowledged, the commission's discretion is fairly limited. If the majority of you are interested in receiving a presentation in a subsequent planning commission meeting about fire evacuation, know your zone, et cetera, I'm very happy to talk to the fire marshal and try to make that happen soon.
But not as it relates to this project?
The commission's discretion, as described by my staff, and I think as all of you are discussing, is very limited to the architectural design of these homes and whether the previous SEQA is adequate. And that's the same as staff's review. Our review is focused on the Land Development Code, state law, because we have a very limited purview given those, those housing laws that Senior Planner Eno described.
Vice Chair, Rudeen?
I'd like to start my comments with, I read every single email that we received. I read the entire staff report, despite my stupid question about the H55 thing, sorry about that. I completely understand what you're saying. I live Nut Tree, Foxborough area. We weren't under mandatory evacuation, but everyone was bailing and the roads were packed. So I completely understand and sympathize. And, you know, with that said, I know there's an accident on 80 based off of how bad Peabody and Nut Tree is before I see anything on Facebook. So I do hear you. I do understand. But with that said, this project addresses a desperate need for housing in Vacaville that we need, especially when it comes to rental. Also, Vacaville is predominantly single family home or apartments because for the longest time, the general plan was 75% single family home, 25% higher density. This project addresses a very, very necessary missing middle that we need. We have, we have local colleges from Davis to Solano. We have Travis Air Force Base where service members might not be looking to purchase a home, that they might only be here for a year or so. So in the scope of what this project is, it meets the required findings for approval. It addresses a desperate need that we need, and I, I do thank you for that. And I also thank you very much for the nicer amenities with the granite countertops. It's, it sounds like they'll be very, very nice. So this project has my full support. So this project has my full support.
Thank you. I, I do have a question about the setbacks and the ADU, JADU reason that was given by the architect. So we did have a similar missing middle discussion with North Village, right? North Village has the ADUs and JDUs attached to that project, correct? Ms. Rudyan?
And then that other comparable project, there is, the proposal is disseminating detached or attached ADUs throughout the development.
Did we, do we, and I just don't recall off the top of my head, did we have a setback? A similar setback situation for the similar project that we approved?
There wasn't a request because the specific plan for that project has its own setback standards that vary between more lenient or more rigorous types of standards.
And so you're saying, and can you put it into just a regular person's understanding of what you're saying? So is North Village, is there more space in North Village than this project would have? Is it more crammed in this project than North Village, for instance?
I, I think the conversation is about when this project was originally approved in 2007, the city had different development standards. Stricter development standards. And through the years, we've worked, and it started in 2018, when the city adopted an update, a comprehensive update to the way that we looked at residential development. And we said, if we really want to get a more, a variety of housing in the city, we have to look at different ways on how we're dealing with our setbacks, our building setbacks, our architectural design, our building forms, and how we're able to accommodate all these things. And so with that, we changed the way that we look at residential setbacks, and they were reduced and became more lenient. This particular project is, is inheriting the responsibility to comply with development standards that were approved in 2007, and then were reaffirmed in 2016 as a condition of approval. Nowadays, we don't add stricter setbacks as conditions of approvals, because it's always deferral to what the code says. So in this particular case, the applicant is looking to just comply with the city's code for those setbacks, rather than these more rigorous standards, because it's just a different product. They're proposing the single-family with a junior and detached, detached ADU, rather than larger, uh, single-family homes.
Yeah, I guess my concern is that we are going to a situation here where we don't really know a lot about what's going to happen. And the, the setback requirement is, is what it is. And so that, are we providing a, what was the setback? Let me back up. The 2007 standards, they would not have accounted for like JDUs and ADUs? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. They did not.
Okay. And, and so the situation where it feels like it's a little more tight is a consequence of this JDU, ADU situation?
That's correct.
The issue with the tier one, is it tier one fire hazard? We got a letter from someone that described it as a, as fire hazards in tiers.
The project's located, if, if we were to look at the recently adopted safety element, it's located in a moderate fire hazard, wildfire zone, moderate. And there's, you know, a lot of different areas within the city that are not located up against hillside areas, but might be located up against creeks that fall into that moderate category.
And so we're talking about experimenting with JDUs and ADUs. We don't have anything like this. And so we don't really have a history of dealing with evacuating in an area that has JDUs and ADUs in a moderate fire hazard zone?
We have developments in moderate fire zones. This is the first development that we've received that is incorporating ADUs and JDUs with single-family homes.
In a moderate fire, because somebody asked us earlier, so I'm scrolling off of a consistent thread of what I heard, is there's not a project like this in Vacaville?
That, that's accurate.
And, and so this would be a, an experiment of sorts, then, something different?
Albert, I'm going to jump in here. I feel like Albert has tried, has answered your question, but to put a finer point on it, any resident of Vacaville who owns a home in a moderate or high, high, high hazard zone is legally allowed to come to our building division. And if they meet the setbacks, they can build an ADU and junior ADU. And that, that's, that's what the new laws say. So this project is not, it is the first we've had with the combination of the units on the site, but literally anybody in a moderate zone, anywhere in Vacaville, anywhere in the state of California, can come to a building counter if they meet setbacks. The city cannot say no, because that is where the state has gone with their laws. So I just want to make that point, because I feel like Albert's been answering the question, but I wanted to add.
He's good at it. Thanks, Albert. Not to pick on you. Okay. So I think we're ready to vote on this? Do we have? Sorry. Commissioner Fortney bring up his.
You want to respond, or if not, I'll, I'll make the motion.
I just want to remind the commission that this project is, is doing several things to improve current conditions as to fire risk. One, we're widening California Drive. Two, as part of the tentative map approval and final map, that open space parcel has been due to the city, so it's going to be subject to a higher level of maintenance now to reduce fire risk. And three, by putting these roads in, in the development itself, you're providing the fire department better access to the hillside, because currently they have to drive across an open field. So that might not satisfy people's concerns, but there are improvements being made by this project as far as fire risk that exists today. The issues, the radar issue, that, that, to me, we're here with our house plan review. The current owner is putting in the roadway improvements. I think that's beyond our scope on making different improvements to the roadways that are already, there's already a SIA signed plans attached. I don't want to interfere with that process. The noise issues, just first to clarify, impacts of the existing environment on the project are not SEQA impact, but, but there's still concern about disclosure. The property manager is planning to make those disclosures as part of his leasing documents as far as the, I guess it's, it's the prison facility that has a shooting range on it. So those disclosures will be made. I, I don't know if you need a condition for that. I don't think there'd be any objection to, there's no objection if you want to impose a condition on that, but that, they want to have happy tenants, so they're going to make proper disclosures.
Are your council, the council you'll be before, you may be before, or this council?
Has made it very aware, they don't want tenants or residents coming back to them with information that's never been disclosed at the time of executing a contract. So if you're willing to do a disclosure at that point, that's, that's going to keep everybody happy.
We're, we would accept a friendly condition on making that as part of our existing obligation to make the park disclosure. We can add the prison facility disclosure to that.
Perfect.
On the fence, my understanding is that the, the lifespan of the fence will be investigated. I don't think today the applicant is ready to say we're going to replace all the fences on that border, because if, if it doesn't make, if they have life ahead of them, it doesn't make economic sense to turn and put in new ones. The, and, and they weren't a condition on, on this tentative map approval, like those fences were to remain.
Correct.
So, so I guess I can answer yes to one out of three there.
Have the conversation. Director Morris, do I have, do we have the authority to put the condition in for the radar, for a calm, traffic calming?
That's the first I'm hearing of this interest. I think it is a little bit iffy, because not to always, not to agree with the applicant's attorney, but actually do all of those kinds of features, like in Green Tree, for example, with that tentative subdivision map and all of that original entitlements. The city required the radar detection. But this is a case where this commission and staff and all of us were only looking at house plans. So I think I'm inclined to agree with the applicant that that would be outside the scope of the commission's authority.
I was going to take his answer, but I wanted to confirm.
And I'm not a lawyer, but I'm giving you my professional planning, my planning.
No. Okay. Perfect. Then you're right. Well, one out of three. I can make a good living making, batting one, one for three. So, all right, thanks.
Chair, if you're, if you're comfortable, I'll make a motion.
I just have one question about income levels. Is that something that the applicant would be comfortable with? Giving us a little more on income levels, to low income to very low? Or are we fixed, you're under an obligation really to accept any specific?
So unfortunately today, because we will not be the owner upon occupation, we can't make commitments on the mix today, because that has to be a conversation with integrity housing. That, that, we can't bind them now, because we don't know the repercussions. We don't know what financing they're get. You know, there, there are just too many, that's, that's their business plan and their financing, and we can't make commitments today on that.
Thanks, Christian.
Ready, I'll make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. By simple motion, with that, this planning commission reaffirm the Montessa mitigated negative declaration and approve the minor design review and adjustments for the Montessa House Plans Project at 1222 California Drive, subject to the conditions of approval.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wilkerson? Sheriff Fortney? Sheriff Arakus?
Yes.
Sheriff Lightfoot?
Yes.
Commissioner Banta?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rudyan?
Yes.
Eric Klein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Why don't we go ahead and take a five-minute break?
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Ready for school? All right, we will, we'll reconvene. Albert, are you still in the hot seat? This should be fun. You having fun?
Albert, you're doing a great job.
You are. You're, uh.
Hey, that's on record.
You're, you're off the very.
You're doing a great job until you don't.
Only because of the tie. If he takes the tie off, he's not doing a good job.
Go to a pro per minutes next month. I'm gonna call out.
Okay, we will now reconvene. Uh, we're back on, we're back in public hearing. Uh, our next item is villages, villages at Vanden Development Agreement Amendment. After commissioners disclose any ex parte communication, we will receive a presentation from staff followed by commissioner questions. And then we will open it up for public comment. Commissioners, uh, does anyone have any ex parte communication to share?
Yes, I had a conversation with the applicant engineer, Tom Felipe, and received no information that I already did enough.
Okay, Commissioner Wilkerson. Arakis?
Nope.
Okay, appreciate the disclosure. All right, uh, Mr. Renaud, floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the planning commission. This next item before you tonight is the Villages at Vanden Development Agreement Amendment. This is a request coming to us to amend the Villages at Vanden Development Agreement. And the purpose of this is to extend the term of the agreement by three years, from November 22nd, 2023 to 2026. There's a location map showing where we're talking about. This is the southeast corner of the city, identified in blue as Vanden Meadows. And there is a specific plan associated with this. That was a mixture of single family and multifamily. However, that was later changed to 780 units in 2014. Uh, the project has four different neighborhoods with, that are spread across 206 acres. Each one of those neighborhoods have development agreements. Vanden Estates has 209 units that are single family detached. That DA expires um, on November 8th, 2023. The Villages at Vanden project that's here for tonight consists of 464 units. And that one is currently under construction. Uh, that DA is set to expire November 22nd of this year. Parkside is 50 units of single family detached. That is also completed with that DA expiring, uh, April in 2024. And then Foxborough Knoll, which is under construction by Polty Homes consisting of 57 units. They're under construction right now. That DA is set to expire July 2025. Also included with that master plan community was a 6.15 acre neighborhood park in the Vanden Estates component of the project. And then also a 28 acre site that was reserved for Travis Unified School District. So the Villages at Vanden Development uh, is broken up into three different villages. It's units, um, sorry, it's Village I, that's above in the yellow. Uh, sorry, that's Village H. Village I is down below in the cream color. And then there's Village G, that's in the blue color. Uh, so there's three villages in the Villages at Vanden Development. The yellow color and cream color development are currently under construction by Meritage Homes. And so they're moving forward. They have recorded a um, final map for that one. And so with that development agreement for the Villages at Vanden, we've got those three different villages that we noted. Village G, the topic of tonight, is 97 units. Those are courtyard homes. All those units are still remaining. No final map has been recorded for that one. Village H consists of 210 units. Those are all single family detached homes. There's 180 units that are remaining. So some of those have already started construction, 30 of them have already completed construction. That's by Meritage Homes. Village I, 157 units, single family detached again. 120 units are remaining. So you can see that that component of the Villages Development is, is going ahead with construction. As I noted before, this one, this development agreement is set to expire November 22nd of this year. Because the final maps have already been recorded for Village H and I, there's no need for um, the extension to affect those particular villages because they've already recorded their final maps. And all the vested requirements that were in the development agreement are still applicable to those properties. The trigger is recordation of a final map, and Village G has not done that yet. So what does Village G look like? Well, there's a general plan and zoning for this property. General plan is residential medium density, which uh, has a density range of 8.1 uh, units to 14 units per acre. That would give them a bottom range of 86 units that they could develop on the site and a maximum of 152 units that they could do at the site. They're right in that lower end of 97 units that they're proposing uh, for the general plan. So the original approval complies with the general plan as it sits today. Zoning for the project is residential medium density. Uh, what was originally approved with the overall specific plan was courtyard, single family detached courtyard homes with multiple driveways focused on one driveway that's shared and then up fronted out into the street. Uh, the minimum lot size is required by the zoning district was 40,000, as it sits today, is 40,000 square foot, square feet. Single family is a conditionally permitted use. So there, these are some vested rights that are allowed with this specific plan to be able to do detached, single family homes. Multifamily is permitted, so that's that range that you can see uh, of where there's 152 units that, at some point, somebody could have proposed that. But right now, what has been vested and what has been approved for the project was 97 units detached courtyard homes. And so the applicant is requesting an extension of that development agreement that allows them to be able to do that and move forward with that particular project. There are some city benefits, uh, contributions from the developer that go along with this proposal. They are annexed into the Community Facility District Number 11. That was required by the project um, approval. Uh, the project is going to be, they're going to have to pay for the park development impact fees as well as the special water annexation fees. They are, as part of the original approvals, required to construct all the public improvements, uh, street, curb gutter and sidewalk uh, within their development. This particular amendment includes, it has a three years that they're proposing, but it also includes a proposal to uh, disallow build for rent types of product. Um, there's no intention to have a build for rent type of product. It's intended to be a courtyard type of design, all market rate, single family detached homes. What happens if it expires? Uh, well, the developer would not need to pay uh, a special water annexation fee that's vested in the development agreement. Um, there's so, there's no certainty about the type of land development that could be on the tentative map. The tentative map is linked to the development agreement. So if the development agreement is extended, that means that the tentative map goes along with it. But if it expires, that means that tentative map is no longer there, which means a new developer could come in and build something that could go within that density range of 86 units to 152 units. Current zoning would be, could be multifamily as a permitted use. Uh, developer wouldn't be required to construct any street frontage improvements. However, that is something that's typically negotiated when new tentative maps might come in. Uh, uh, the last effect of the expiration is that there is a missing middle type of design that's as part of this Village G development, which is the courtyard homes. If that expires, then it would be subject to whatever future development potential could be at the site. But what we know for now is that Village G is a courtyard type of design, which is a missing middle that the city does need. Um, after the, we've done a number of public outreach efforts for this particular project. It started off with a notice that we received, an application that was mailed on May 4th. We hadn't heard back from the public on this proposal. Uh, so we scheduled, we went straight to a public hearing and we mailed a notice on August 3rd. We received public comments after we published the staff report on August 14th. And there were a number of concerns that were expressed in that public comment. And I'll go over those just briefly. Um, there was a concern about uh, a community benefit contribution fee. So the original development agreement that was identified, that was approved for this subdivision, included a requirement to pay a community benefit contribution fee uh, with every single family permit that was issued for it. Well, in uh, in June of last year, the city council decided that along with its new development impact fees update, they would be this uh, going away with discontinuing the community, the CBC fees with every single development agreement because uh, it had been determined that the obligation to pay was linked to public improvements. Um, and so rather than have certain subdivisions paying a CBC fee for public improvements, any single family home would have to share that responsibility to pay for fees linked to public improvements. We have, when the AB 1600 study, the development impact fee study was done, we knew all the projects that needed to be done around the city. And so we figured out and calculated that into all the development impact fees that were required for every single family home. So rather than just one subdivision bearing the cost of a CBC fee, everybody needs to bear the responsibility of paying for that. There was a concern about uh, permit and school fees and the comparison. There was a note that the permit fees for every single family home now seem to be lower since they're not paying the CBC fee. That explanation is, is that um, yes, with the removal of the CBC fee, with the removal of that, you will see that single family homes are paying, maybe paying less overall for the permits. But that's because everybody's sharing the cost of needing to pay for those public improvements. There are other changes such as park fees. Those were substantially increased uh, for every single family home. There was a concern about whether or not the project was complying with the Vanden Meadows specific plan. And um, specifically, the concern was that the original project documents identified that the project was supposed to annex into CFD number 12. In our research, we found that that was a reference to an old draft document. So for this particular project, uh, environmental impact reports are prepared. So in the draft environmental impact report, there was a citation within this specific plan that said, uh, it was anticipated that the project would annex into CFD number 12. Uh, but the final documents that were presented to planning commission and the city council and that were passed via ordinance all identified that the obligation uh, to pay for CFD should be uh, CFD number 11. And so uh, we were able to clear, clarify that one as part of our responses in the memo that was provided to the planning commission. Uh, there were some questions about previous actions with the development agreement that was also clarified in that memo for the planning commission and then also the funding mechanisms for public improvements. So with that, uh, staff has um, a conclusion for the commission. We've looked at the proposed amendment and the changes to that development agreement. And we found that it meets the required code findings for amending a development agreement, complies with Division 14 dot 17 of the code that regulates how you make changes to development agreements. Uh, there's no changes to the obligations or improvements that are already required in the development agreement. There's no changes to the project. They're still proposing 97 units with um, detached courtyard cluster lots. Um, and the extension would benefit uh, the city because um, we'd get that water annexation fee. And then there's a provision for the no build for rent. So it's going to be a market rate for sale product. So with that, we have a recommendation for the planning commissions. By simple motion, recommend to city council to adopt the resolution to reaffirm that original EIR for Vanden Meadows specific plan. And then for the city council to introduce the subject ordinance for the development agreement amendment. My presentation, I'm here to answer any questions. We also have the applicant here to talk about uh, why they're asking for this extension.
Invite the applicant up.
Uh, we're here tonight about the last lot in this plan area that uh, we're just looking for a little bit more time to complete the city's vision for this area and to uh, and the city's already been in contact with Lancy Homes, who we're in contract with. Uh, if things go according to plan, uh, we would start seeing construction the first half of next year on the. And we're, we're just asking for three years though, because things don't go according to plan every time. So we're looking for a little bit of buffer to deal with that uh, potential need for a little extra time if things don't go quite as planned. Uh, that, as described in the staff report. And there was a prior application to extend this DA. Uh, a longer term was asked for. There are currently, at that point, there was more than just this track left. Uh, and also after hearing out the council that time, uh, the applicant reduced its request and dropped some of its requests that it wanted in that amendment. So we're coming to the very simple, three years only, nothing else touched amendment other than what we understand is addressing a community concern and agreeing not to have a build for rent project, which doesn't change anything for us because that's not the plan. So I'm happy to ask any, answer any questions regarding the project, but we would appreciate your support and your recommendation to the city council to uh, complete the visions for this area. Because uh, as been seen on other projects, when, when DA's expire and, and new product comes in that wasn't expected, it, it can create community anxiety. And we're just looking to complete the plan as already proposed. Thank you.
Thanks, Christian. You'll hang out. Okay, um, let's open it up for commissioner questions, starting with uh, Rudy.
I'd like to ask a clarifying question. I think this would be directed at you, Director Morris. Okay, so if the development agreement expires, would it then be subject to newer density amounts?
If, if the development agreement expires, as Albert articulated, they could come in, it would be by, right, it's a permitted use, it would be designer view, but permitted use. And they could build multifamily up to, what was it, 152 unit? 152 units of multifamily. And if they met the city's objective design standards, uh, the city would have to approve that. But if the development agreement expires, it doesn't mean that someone wouldn't possibly come in and embark on the same project and kind of try to revive or activate, but it wouldn't guarantee that either.
But there's the potential that it could be bumped up. Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Bonta?
No question.
I thought?
I have no questions.
I'm good.
Good.
All right, uh, Mr. Wilkerson, commissioner. Okay, with that, uh, we'll, I'll open public comment for the matter.
Hi, Alicia Minion again. I want to thank the staff for um, answering some of my questions from the email that I sent. I expressed a lot of concerns. I only have three minutes. I wish I had more time. So the, the, the one thing that really still is unresolved is the community benefit contribution fee. Um, that fee is not a development impact fee. When you read the development agreements, and there are nine of them with um, a CBC fee, that CBC fee is for a community wide benefit. It could be capital improvement projects, could be things that are not um, included in a development impact fee. So that fee is really for residents. And it's the special compensation that was negotiated that really made the development agreement valuable. So development agreements, um, the city provides an incredible value to the developer when it agrees to enter into a long-term development agreement. And the city of Banning, they have a municipal code for development agreements as they are required. And I like what they said. Development agreements should only be used after careful consideration because they limit the authority of future city councils to react to change conditions. There should be something extraordinary that should be given and paid to, to the city in return for locking in that land. Because the environment has changed. Our needs are, have changed. And so when you lock it in, we need to be paid. It's clear from the South Town Development Agreement and the other agreements, that CBC fee is what made that development agreement. That language for the CBC fee has not been uh, amended out of this particular Vanden Meadows agreement or any of the others. State law requires on an amendment that the public receive public notice. There'd be a planning commission hearing about the amendment. There'd be another public notice, and it's only city council can approve the elimination. There's no ministerial adjustment even allowed under state law. This is something that's only included in our municipal code and that diminishes the um, but basically you've created a code on development agreements that's less restrictive than the state. So while I, while I understand the negative consequences of development agreements expiring because uh, South Town is a victim of that, what I'm saying is, the staff needs to follow the law. These laws are here to protect the public. And the amendments were made to remove a CBC fee that is worth millions and millions. And by the way, I sent a phone and an email to let you know that, that one of the developer's agents brought up a very important point. They said the CBC fee, there's never been an accounting of it. What's the city done with this money? If I was a developer, I'd be upset too. Where is the accounting for the CBC fee? This is the biggest problem I see with this development agreement and the nine others. Yes.
Afraid that's time.
Okay.
But thank you for your comments. And uh, we, we did read your correspondence and um.
Yeah.
Free to hang out, uh, and.
Yeah, I, I just think CBC fees, they go to home builders, they're publicly traded. These are companies with market caps of three to five billion. This is what we're giving. This is what we're giving. We're giving up our money for a builder like that. I don't understand it.
That's, that's time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who is yours?
I had, this is Wendy Brecken, and appreciate your consideration of what I'm saying. I read quickly what the staff response was to Alicia Minion's email, and I think what's really missing is if you look at, okay, amendment of development agreement and the muni code, What it reads when you parse it down is any revision to the development agreement which does not relate to a bunch of stuff. It doesn't relate to monetary exactions of the developer. That's what this is. The CBC fee is a monetary exaction on the developer. So what this means is you cannot do an administrative adjustment. The Director of Community Development has no authority to make that change in this development agreement. Instead, they should have noticed it at the time they noticed the time extension for the development agreement. They should have noticed the CBC deletion, the fee deletion. Then it goes to the City Council, and then they, development agreement by development agreement, have to approve the amendment of the development agreement. You can't just, without following the processes of 1417050020030040050, it's a whole thing. You have to look at the public notice provisions, and I would really like to hear what the legal council has to say as to how, how possibly there could be a legal finding that this CBC fee can be deleted in this development agreement by administrative action. It needs to happen by Planning Commission approval and the approval of the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kevin Puett, P-U-E-T-T. I live at 4024 Lancaster Court. That's the third house in from the upper left-hand corner. My big concern about this Village G is all the parking issues that are going to flow into my neighborhood and onto my street. So I cannot see how you can build 97 units in that small space and not have the people that, and build enough parking spaces for all of those people that are going to be in there. I believe that they're going to be flowing out into, right into my neighborhood, right up my street, and into the surrounding areas around it. So you have all these people that are about to start buying homes in the rest of the villages that are going to be negatively impacted, and they aren't even here to speak because they haven't bought it yet. They don't know when they buy it that there's going to be a new Village G that's going to be developed that's negatively, negatively going to impact them and parking on their streets. But I know you guys are going to go ahead and approve this, and it's all going to just keep on going. But I am hoping that as the process goes forward, that you'll be able to try to make them build these, this development where they have proper parking in that, so people stay within their Village G without flowing down my street. And if you, and if they do start flowing down my street, I would appreciate it if the city of Vacaville would implement a permit parking plan on my street and the streets around us to enforce that compliance that they say within Village G. And one more thing, I have seen the Meritage Housing, and I believe they're the ones who are going to be over this. I've seen other projects they've had in the Bay Area where they've done something similar to this, and what I've seen in those is that neighborhood, the parking did flow outside of that development, and it negatively impacted the neighborhood around them. So I've seen them already fail in other places, so I assume that they will fail here too. Thank you.
There are no other members of the public here to address the commission. I'll go ahead and close public comment, and I'll invite Albert to respond to the public comments.
I'll take the last comment first, as the first comment will be handled by our director on the CBC. Regarding parking, this particular entitlement request is to extend to DA, not for parking. But there are assurances that as development comes through and we review it, we're required to make sure that they are complying with parking standards. So at the time when any type of housing development comes in, we would make sure that there's, they're meeting their onsite parking requirements, that there's guest parking maybe on the street, that they're meeting whatever the provisions are within the code. So that, that's the response for the parking. Our director can handle the.
Well, there was, in response, questions we received about the CBC. It's a long story that begins in 1992, and I'm not going to recap all of it, but essentially the city of Vacaville, unlike cities that's coming to do the normal thing of updating development impact fees every five years, did not update development impact fees for a period of 30 years. So the fees were established in 1992, and it wasn't until the summer of 2022, specifically June 28th of 2022, that the Vacaville City Council updated the development impact fee program. We call that the AB 1600 study. So as part of that, the council had no less than four public discussions at council meetings, and as a city council, they decided that in light of the new fee schedule that accounted for all the projects that needed to be constructed, sewer, water, roadway, infrastructure, et cetera, in light of a new fee program that would cover all of those things that need to happen with new development, it was no longer necessary or desired to impose this additional requirement on these subdivisions. And the council is the legislative body of this city, and they made this action at a public meeting on June 28th. And as part of the resolution they adopted, they provided direction to staff to address this by removing the CBC requirement from all active development agreements. So this is still, I mean, it's a much longer story. I'm going to cut to the chase. Our planning staff worked very closely with our city attorney's office. We inventoried every single active development agreement, and we have that inventory, and we're still looking at it. We figured out which ones were going to, like, there's one that had one house left, kind of a, you're kind of a pilly part of active, which ones were maybe going to expire, which ones weren't, but fundamentally, we went through and pursuant to the council's direction, we issued letters that administratively removed the CBC requirement. But again, we didn't do that on our own authority. We did that at the direction of the City Council. And then the case of the Vanden, every DA is different, it turns out, like literally every DA in Vacaville is slightly different. So the staff, it's actually Assistant Director Josh Montemeyer up there, who's tasked with this with the attorneys, had to read each and every DA to figure out how to tackle that amendment that the council directed us to do. So for the Villages project, the DA actually specifies an exact CBC amount, and it also included language that anticipated that in the future, that fee could be adjusted or reduced. So that really provided, in the case of this DA, a very clear path for the administrative amendment, and we provided the commission with the supplemental memo, the staff reports, the resolution the council adopted, and the letters that pertain to this particular site. So I can just say, I believe we handled everything correctly, again, working closely with our lawyers, and in fact, it was literally staff implementing council direction. So that's the background on the CBC. But it is unusual, very unusual for a city to wait 30 years to update development impact fees. We've done that now, and when Albert was talking about the new fees that are going into effect, they're all new fees that are going into effect for housing. We now charge a much larger fee for larger homes, recognizing they have maybe more impact, and a smaller fee for smaller homes. That was one of the other things the council did, was really think about what kind of housing are we trying to incentivize in this city, and how do we make sure that larger homes pay their fair share? So anyway, that's my nutshell of the last couple of years of working on that project. But if you have any other questions about the CBC, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Director Morris. Okay, so let's take it with Commission liberation.
I have nothing. I'm, you know what, I quick comment. I'm comfortable with, with the extension of the three years. It's, it's a needed product, and this is the right density in this neighborhood. The alternative could be a much denser product and could be a for-rent product. Those neighbors had voiced their opinion about South Town apartment complex. I don't want to put them through a for-rent product with a higher density. So we know exactly what we're getting tonight. Thanks. That would be my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Fortney. Go under the line. Commissioner Lightfoot?
Okay, so I guess my, just to wrap up what the, the removal of the CBCs, and it's an amendment of the, just so I'm understanding correctly, it's amendment of the current, or they're also taking on the current fees associated with typical building. And so do we have a total on what the cost of the original project with the original building fees and permits, including the CBC, is? And then the new cost of the, with, with the new cost with the current resolution removing the CBC fee, is there, was there a difference between the two?
Included in the supplemental memo that was provided to the commission, there's a table under item number two for permit fee comparison that shows examples of how this was implemented by Meritage Homes' house plans within units 1A and 1B, that's the adjoining neighborhoods. And the old fee, you'll see that there is, for instance, a house plan that is 2020 square feet, there was an old fee of $65,334. The new fee is $63,361, and that removes the CBC fee with the new fee. So yes, it is slightly less, but that's because the requirement to pay for city infrastructure and capital improvement projects is dispersed among all residential development, not just one particular subdivision.
Thank you for explaining that chart. Lightfoot, you go? Okay. Commissioner Bonta?
I'm good.
Vice Chair Rudyan?
I agree with Commissioner Fortney that we know what we're getting with this project. It's going to be because of what happened with South Town, and we know what we're getting with this project. We know what we're getting by extending this development agreement.
Do you want to make a motion?
I simple motion recommend that the City Council adopt the subject resolution for reaffirming the Vandenmeadows specific plan and development project FEIR and introduce the subject ordinance for the development agreement amendment.
We have a second. Seconded by Commissioner Wilkerson. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Wilkerson. Commissioner Fortney.
Yes.
Herr Vargas.
Yes.
Herr Lightfoot.
Yes.
Bonta.
No.
Vice Chair Rudyan.
Yes.
Erin Klein.
No.
Passed as Act 2.
Okay. We'll now move on to item eight, Director's Report.
Thank you, Chair Klein and Commission. We're going to get the presentation up, and we're going to go quickly, and if you have questions afterward, we'll be happy to entertain them. So let's just jump right in with the next slide. So some City Council updates of projects that were previously here at the Planning Commission. On July 25th, the City Council approved the housing element, approved the land use and development code update, approved the housing implementation program, and had a study session on objective design standards. If you're interested in objective design standards, I suggest you watch the study session. If there's anything in there that is a commission you feel like you'd like to have brought here as a discussion, I'm happy to do that. On August 8th, on consent, the council approved a very minor update to the Green Tree Development. There was an error in the general plan exhibit, and it got fixed onward. There's a lot of stuff coming up at council, so on August 22nd, they will be reviewing the North Village Area Plan 2 project, perhaps for final action. They will also be having a study session on digital freeway billboards. That got pushed to that date from previous. And then up in September, we've got a heck of a bunch of stuff we're bringing to the council, a downtown specific plan update, housing laws update, same one we brought the commission, it's going to the council at their request, and we're doing a housing wrap-up that basically wraps up the previous five study sessions I've given the council about housing, trying to bring it all together. And then the last thing of note for September is that we have the National Community Planning Month proclamation that the council will be doing. A lot of stuff coming toward commission, and we do have a special meeting planned for October 3rd, and thank you all for agreeing to be there. Over the course of September and October, the commission will be reviewing the Bright Sky subdivision. Dutch Bros will be re-noticed for whatever date it finally is ready to go to. We have a Habitat for Humanity project. The council, the commission on October 3rd will be receiving an urban reserve development, land inventory and development forecast sort of study session and discussion. And then lastly, we have a new use permit and development agreement for a project up on Weber Road. So you have things coming up in the future. And now we're going to pivot to the Building Division monthly report, and Josh will take it from here.
Thanks, Erin. Good evening, planning commissioners. So up on the screen, we've got the Building Division monthly report, and we had a downward trend in the month of July. And if you noticed, there was a significant decline in the number of revenue, in the revenues collected from the total fees, sorry, from the total fees that we collected from revenue. This was expected because of the hybrid fee schedule that sunsetted in June. Here's a vertical bar graph showing the building permit activities is on a downward trend. Even though we're on a downward trend, we have 2,700 building permits that are issued to date. And here is another vertical bar graph showing our total inspections volume, which has actually remained pretty steady on average. About 1,100 to 1,200 inspections are completed by our building inspectors monthly. And then here's a correlating bar graph showing our solar permits in relation to building permits. Both are on a decline. And something noteworthy for the Building Division this month, we launched a solar, residential solar permitting app called Symbium. It's powered by a company called Symbium, which provides for real-time permit issuance of solar permits and energy, battery energy storage systems for residential projects. And the why this is important is because it's SB 379 compliant, and SB 379 is a Senate bill that was initiated to expedite permit checking for residential solar permits, so that way this state can reach their ambitious goal of 2035 to be carbon neutral. So more information about this to come in a newsletter that we're going to release later this week, but if you wanted to go ahead and explore it, go to symbium.com, and you can plug in any Vacaville address, and information about that will pop up. And I'll turn it over to Pamon.
So, good evening, Commission. I'll go through this quickly. So for District 1, we had two approvals, one for a senior daycare program and one for total wine and more, and they're going to be taking over the old Saks Fifth Avenue building at Nuttree. District 2 received house plans for Village L of Roberts Ranch and just miscellaneous residential improvements and plan checks. For District 3, again, miscellaneous residential improvements, such as patio covers and ADUs. District 4, we received the plan check for Drive Through Chipotle, called Chipotleen. I know. Can't defend the name, but that's what it's called.
Winning. Original.
It's really creative, too. District 5 received application for the interim fire station for Lower Gun Valley, and again, miscellaneous residential improvements. And for District 6, we received projects for house plans for those at Vanden, and then house and modification for Fox Runnels. And for advanced planning, I think Director Morris went over these on July 25th, the second reading for the housing element on July 28th. Staff submitted the housing element to HCD, and then we are also sort of kicked off the implementation programs for items that need to be done by the end of this year and early 2024.
Congratulations on finally filling that Saks building. Very good job.
Last part of our presentation is some announcements. So first, I want to announce that my staff, a lot of us, and a 40, total of 40 city staff, visited downtown Vacaville on July 27th, and we tried to talk to each and every business owner or employee that we could talk to. Got a lot of really good information, and I've given the commission each a copy of the materials we left behind with each of the businesses. That'll go on our website soon. It's all stuff that's very public, but I just wanted to share with the commission that it was a wonderful day actually connecting with business owners. with business owners and hearing about their visions for downtown, and then also, our department participated in National Night Out, and that was also just awesome. We had a bunch of groups of staff going out, hitting as many block parties as possible, and I think we hit almost all of them, except for maybe five, so it was a pretty good evening. Next slide, please. So staffing announcements, we did hire a building inspector, we've been down one full-time inspector since November, and our new guy just started last Monday, so we are fully staffed, but still trying to catch up. We've managed to hire three high school interns, all of them were graduates of the Summer at City Hall program, and they're helping us catch up with some scanning, and they're all wonderful young people. We are in the beginning stages of recruiting the plan check engineer that will be reviewing all the plans in our building division. Josh touched on the Symbium launch. I think two of you commissioners are joining me at the Salona County Planning Commissioners Training on August 25th, and the last thing is, you will all receive a copy of the, is it the second or third Community Development e-newsletter, and it's going out this week. And you'll recognize a lot of the topics because I've covered them in this update. That's, that's all I have for this evening.
A big welcome to Nancy on your first meeting.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry I didn't get to participate in all of the lively discussions we were having.
Yeah, you're not missing anything. We assume that you brought all that with you, because, you know, it's been quiet.
I did. Definitely.
Let's try to avoid too much fun. Okay, now's the time in our agenda where we open up to commissioner comments, and this is the time for commissioners to share about meetings or potential things of interest or whatever's on your heart, anything for the good of the order, essentially. So with that, why don't we start with Vice Chair Rudin?
Hey, all things District Six over here. I am going to read a letter that is from our District Six Action Team. So, "South Town Magnolia Park Pop-Ups. Currently in South Town, there are no neighborhood-friendly commercial and social outlets to foster community identity through shared economic and social interaction. The District Six Action Team, Alice and Joan, have submitted a proposal to the city's park and recreation department to address this, to a small degree, in Magnolia Park. The proposal was generally endorsed by Parks and Rec Director Reggie Hubbard and Recreation Director Melody Ocampo. Both offered to help evaluate ideas and guide us through the Parks Department process and special events. On Saturday morning, July 29th, Alice, Joan, and Vice Mayor Wiley hosted neighbors to listen to the idea, hear the city's response, and to get suggestions for moving forward. Also at the meeting was a pop-up example, a slice of lemon lemonade stand from the neighbors who attended. We have a committee of five, and they will be meeting on Wednesday, August 23rd, to develop ideas and move ahead to build neighborhood support for pop-ups, and they will keep the Planning Commission in the loop." That I've got?
Perfect. Thank you, Amanda. Commissioner Bonta?
I'll comment.
Oh, light and fast. Vargas?
Yeah, special shout-out to Vice Mayor Wiley. National Night Out was a, was a hoot, fire, police, and then the city bus came out, giving away t-shirts, and it was a real treat. She, she actually came out to the spot that we went to and provided a hundred-dollar gift card for food and stuff, so very, very great. Let's see, school, back to school for some tomorrow, Thursday, my son goes to Markham. My significant other, who is president of the PTO at Markham, they did a backpack giveaway, which was a success, gave out, I think, 130 backpacks, so that's always a phenomenal effort. And then don't forget this Saturday confunction at Andrews Park, so hopefully you'll all be there.
Thanks, ma'am.
Will do, will do. Thank you. From you?
Nothing?
Time's up. I gotta give you...
We love for these stories now, come on.
I do, I do need your time, you're right. Couple, couple things real quick. Good seeing Josh out at National Night Out, it was good, Andrews Park, I was up there. It's good to see the kids interacting with police and fire, and they had a, they had a phone machine, which I thought was pretty awesome, and, you know, you'd see the kids go in there and run the phone machine, and then I saw, saw parents just going, oh, man, and I was like, that's why mine aren't here. No one, no one prepared to bring that change of clothes. Speaking of kids, for the last two months, I was a coach out at Junior Giants through Powell over at Arlington, fantastic, fantastic program, loved the interaction with the kids, especially the underprivileged who don't always get an opportunity to play sports. And something that have stuck, that has stuck with me, one of the kids, we, we were practicing, we were just learning how to, you know, catch, throw, hit, all the things, and I said, hey, how was it today? And he said, this was the best day ever because I just hit a homerun. Was it really a homerun? I don't know, but the fact, hey, the fact that he was an, he didn't have a chance to really play sports, and he had an opportunity to do that, really, really stuck with me. And so seeing the, the growth and the development of these kids throughout the end of the year, we played full games for the last five weeks, and, you know, we were out there in the heat, and those kids just came out every week and they supported it. And I also want to shout out Councilmember Richie, who used his district dollars to host the barbecue at the end. So we had families out there, we had Kona Ice, Police Activities League, board was there barbecuing, and it was just a really great event to see the growth and development over eight weeks for those kids, and just to see potentially, there was a lot, there was talent. There was definitely talent, it was just access is what those kids don't have, which was, you know, is another story for another day. And then on last Sunday, Police Activities League, youth versus cops over at Centennial and Horse Creek, and so I was out there watching, and I didn't see any rolled ankles, I didn't see any hamstrings bones, so overall, I think the kids won, but I think it was a successful day because I didn't see any adult...
They really won?
Yeah, they, I think they really, I think the score ended, but I was concerned, you know, you get out there, hey, I played high school soccer, I can go out and play, and I was just, fingers crossed, you know, no one rolled an ankle, so it was, it was good to see that, just the continued interaction between cops and kids. It's pretty awesome, so I'm not using all of your time. Great presentations tonight, good public input, welcome Nancy, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilkerson. I do want to hit a few points. A big thank you to Mr. Albert Enal for being a sport tonight. I know I, we rely a lot on you for your great analysis, and everyone did a great job, Paimon, you hung in there riding shotgun. But at Noah, I think, he had a good night, too, so hung in there. No, I'm, I'm not surprised, I just, we haven't heard a lot from Noah, so I, it was good to see, you know, staff development is, is a wonderful thing to see, and you guys are finally staffing up, and it's good to see everything running really well, Aaron. So I do want to have a shout-out to Aaron, I, my kids were talking about seeing her at Night Out. I was on a conference call, so it took me a while to get down there, but when I did get down there, I saw councilman Stockton and the, the horse that they're giving the kids a ride around, and it's a wonderful thing that tied everyone together at every district, so unfortunately, I can only make it to mine, but I had a great time while I was there. And then for coming into this week, everyone's kids are going back to school, finally. And, you know, my, my, so shout-out to my wife, who is teaching fifth grade at Markham, and she's, you know, they've been at it since Monday, and so the teacher's already back in the classroom, and the kids will finally be back in the classroom as well on Thursday. Anyway, great to see the community moving forward, and a lot of wonderful things, we had progress at this meeting. Thank you, everyone. With that, we're dismissed for our next meeting, September 19th. Good night.